The November 19th, 2025 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded and can be viewed live on City of Las Vegas TV on Cox Cable Channel 2. You could also watch the meeting live online and access other city content by visiting LasVegasNevada.gov/Connect. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on City of Las Vegas TV, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or in the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. Please note, if you are parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Pastor Andrew Mason, International Church of Las Vegas, and remain standing as he leads us in the pledge? Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor Berkeley, I just want to need to say a personal thank you to you in your office. In 2020, our church received the Fatherhood Grant from Health and Human Services, which we've used over the last five years to minister to over 1,200 dads in our city, many from low-income situations, rehab centers, all different demographics. 10% of our attendees were moms who just want to be better parents, so we welcome them in too. And it was a great initiative that we were able to do. Well, that grant ended this year, and we had to reapply. It's not a reset; we have to compete with other applications. And you and your office were kind enough to write us a letter of endorsement to Health and Human Services. We were awarded that grant for another five years, which, yes, it's to our church, but it's also to our city. It represents $1.2 million a year in federal funding to this city for dads in Las Vegas. So I want to thank you for your support to our community and our families. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Yes, let's pray. Lord, we're thankful to live in a country where we can openly pray for our leaders. The Apostle Paul, one of his first instructions to his protege Timothy was to pray for rulers and all who are in authority, that we may live quiet and peaceable lives in all godliness. And so, Lord, today, we pray for all who serve in our local communities. We pray for our mayor, our city council members, and all you've called to lead in this city. I ask that you strengthen them with your wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens that they carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love, keep their hearts pure, and their eyes turn toward your face as they work in the best interests of the people they are called to serve. I ask for your blessing to be upon the proceedings today, and that in all things you'll be glorified. I pray these things in Jesus' name. Everybody said, "Amen."
Please lead us in the pledge.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Struggling with health care and mental health care outcomes. So I've come to the realization that we cannot improve health care without our higher education partners. It absolutely has to have professionals coming out of a higher education institution that can heal Las Vegas. And so, as much as you all may be lobbying us, we are actively lobbying you to come into downtown Las Vegas because you cannot have a great city without a great university partner, and we are ready to be partners. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, I'm all in red. So I am a Rebel through and through, and one of my honorees is also from a UNLV grad. So I just want to say that UNLV was the first institution of higher learning that my family had access to, being the first generation to go to college. It's so important that you continue that work in our community and that we make sure that we're still inspiring and motivating our youth to see themselves on your campus because there's so much talent, there's so much energy, there's so much genius in Las Vegas that we need to capitalize on. I wanted to also say that, obviously, through the work that Freddie's doing, we're partnering, and I hope that we can partner more with real, hands-on, learning, real-world application and scenarios for so many of your departments that would go amazing with just what the city does and hopefully inspire some of that talent to come to the city post their studies so that they can get a little bit ahead and help us figure out what the path for the future is because we're constantly trying to innovate and to be forward-thinking and to make sure that we're heeding the call and meeting the needs of our community. So just wanted to articulate that we are all about making sure that we're partnering. I know that the School of Landscape Architecture is very heavily involved right now with a few things in my ward, and it warms my heart to see college students already putting their heads together to help us figure a way around problems and figure out solutions because I think that's so, so imperative in their formation, especially their academic formation. So thank you so much. I've been entertaining whether I go back for more education, but, you know, life-learning, lifelong learner here, being a teacher, you continuously have to take credits and be on top of your education game, but maybe we pivot in another area. But looking forward to seeing all the amazing things that UNLV is capable and competent of doing, and I also want to elevate that it's a R1 institution, and that is not an easy thing to secure. So bravo to UNLV for being the research institution, premier institution in our state. And, you know, Notre Dame has been around a really long time and hasn't always had it either. So I think it just speaks to the quality of work that's happening at our alma mater or my alma mater here, UNLV.
Good morning. I am not a UNLV graduate, but I used to teach a lot at UNLV. And I think in addition to providing access to higher education for our students or our community members, one of the key responsibilities of a university is the community engagement. And I just want to actually call out President Hevy and your leadership team because you have taken community engagement to a whole new level, and I look forward, we look forward to working with you as we continue to build that partnership and help our community.
I too am a graduate. That's not why I'm wearing red today. I'm wearing red because it's UNLV Day, and no matter where you graduated from, UNLV is an important and incredibly instrumental part of the fabric of our community. And so I want to thank those who wore red simply too to be able to say, "Go Rebels," just as I would proudly wear blue if I was up in Reno celebrating UNR. And I have three degrees from UNLV and know that that is part of how I'm here and why I'm here, and I'm so grateful for the leadership. Chris, you have been a terrific and integral part of the university. I'm so pleased to be able to be at this city council at a time when you're leading the university with your vision. Thank you.
Come back. I have some things to say. Wait a minute. Everybody here knows my family story. I'm the granddaughter of immigrants that came to America that couldn't speak English. Neither one of my parents graduated high school, but in our family, it didn't matter if you were pretty or popular, it mattered that you got good grades so you could make something of yourself. Of course, I was pretty and popular. I just want that known. If it wasn't for UNLV, I can guarantee that I wouldn't be mayor of Las Vegas now. It opened up an entire world to me as the first person in my family to go to college. And it not only changed my life, which it did dramatically, but it changed the entire trajectory of my family because, of course, all of my children are college graduates and beyond. And that was, our family was afforded that opportunity because of UNLV. My son Sam graduated from the School of Hotel Administration. My son Max, who's with the Public Defender's Office, graduated from the Boyd School of Law. And UNLV has been an integral part of our family and our family's destiny. And I don't think we are very unusual. I think there are tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people living in Southern Nevada and Nevada and throughout the world who have come here for our hotel administration, college, and so many others that have a national and international flavor. UNLV has made a difference in all of our lives, and we are very, very grateful to you. And I say this often. Being a graduate of UNLV gave me, the education I received was wonderful for the life I'm leading. And when I was in Congress and I interacted with presidents and prime ministers and titans of industry, I never once felt inadequate or second-best. If they had an Ivy League education and I graduated from UNLV, I had the tools that was necessary to do my job, and that was because of the fine education that I received at UNLV, our local institution. So I want to thank you on behalf of everybody that calls Las Vegas home and tell you how much we appreciate how you have impacted our lives and made a difference for all of us. And, Chris, if you wouldn't mind introducing who's with you and say a few words if you please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for honoring UNLV. It's been a pleasure to be at UNLV for 33 years and to now have the chance to lead this institution, which they've so eloquently talked about the impact that we have in this community. And so, really pleased to be with you all today, to talk about the institution, and to hear the stories of people whose lives have been directly impacted by UNLV. As the mayor said, over the years, I've seen thousands and thousands of students graduate and go on to do great things, and it's an incredible honor to lead this institution and to work with a great leadership team. Part of our vision is being more involved in the community and making sure we are leaning into community engagement as proactively as possible. And so, very honored to be here with our Vice President of Government Affairs, Constance Brooks, Dr. Constance Brooks. Our amazing provost, Dr. Kate Corrigan, who's also been at the institution for more than 20 years, maybe almost 30 now?
30 this year.
30 this year, all right. And she leads the academics of the university. And then we have the fine Mr. Leo Benavides, who is our Associate Vice President in Government Affairs and also a law graduate, an attorney by training, and so really pleased to have him on our team. My Chief of Staff, Ms. Tondra Day, who does all things important at the university and helps us all survive, so really honored to have her with us. And maybe the colleague I've actually had the chance to work with the longest, Dr. Michelle Paul. Dr. Michelle Paul and I started together because I'm a clinical psychologist, and I hired Dr. Paul into the university more than 20 years ago now? 21 years ago now, and now she is really leading our mental health work where we're trying to work closely with our community and, as Councilman Knutson said, to address the very urgent mental health needs of the Southern Nevada community. So she's a great honor, a great asset to our community.
And if I could invite everybody to come in front of the podium, this is a very special day, not only for UNLV but for everyone here at City Hall. So from the mayor's office, but on behalf of all of the city council members, I have issued a proclamation. I'm not going to read it, but suffice it to say that November 19th, 2025, is UNLV Day and the City of Las Vegas. So thank you so much for everything you've done on behalf of all of us.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye. My pleasure. All right. We will now recognize our Employee of the Month on our ceremonial agenda. And for our first item, I want to invite our city attorney, Jeff Dora Cat, to join us. Thank you. Our employees strive to meet our values of being kind, committed, and smart, and they work to build our community to make a better life. I am proud to announce that the Employee of the Month is Carmen Gilbert. Carmen, please come forward. Carmen is a deputy city attorney and has been with the city since 2023. Carmen works closely with our Building and Safety Division and is a key point of contact for approving agreements that allow developers to begin work on new projects in the city. Carmen shows outstanding professionalism and collaborates easily with other city staff. She always takes the time to review the agreements thoroughly while also balancing the need to have a high standard of timeliness and customer service for those doing business with the city. Carmen's patience, work ethic, collaborative approach, and grace under pressure make her an invaluable asset to the city. Carmen, thank you for all of your hard work and all that you do. And I'd like to give Jeff a chance to say a few words, and then we will hear from Carmen and have a photo.
Mr. City Attorney?
All right, they said to keep it short, so we'll try. Good morning. Yes, it's an exciting morning for the City Attorney's Office to have this honor, even for a profession as modest as the legal profession. It's always appreciated and honoring for one of our attorneys or any of our legal support staff to receive the Employee of the Month recognition because usually, as is the case here, the nomination comes from someone outside of our department for one of our employees. Deputy City Attorney Carmen Gilbert Daly demonstrates the values of the City of Las Vegas, being kind, committed, and smart. So it was unsurprising to all of her supervisors and anybody in our office that these qualities came right through in the nomination that was put forward for her. As the mayor mentioned, Carmen joined the city team about just over two years ago. She's a graduate of UNLV for law school and UNR for undergrad, so we have everything covered today. We're not gonna, we're not gonna have any problems. And then significantly, her background of experience was tremendous in why we brought her into the team. Before joining the City Attorney's Office, she worked at two of the large law firms here in Southern Nevada. She has experience as a development officer for UNLV. She also served as a regional representative for Senator Reed's office and spent a couple years, I believe, as a volunteer for the Peace Corps in Guatemala. So with all of that depth and breadth of experience, as I said, it was unsurprising that she was able to hit the ground running and do all of the amazing things that Mayor Berkeley already mentioned, dealing with franchise agreements, working on the Animal Foundation contracts with our transactional team. And right up till today and continuing onward, monitoring all of the federal events that are happening so that the city and our office know exactly what's going on and what needs to be done for our departments. And then specifically with the nomination today, as Mayor also mentioned, Benita Crook, a management analyst in the Building and Safety Division of Code Enforcement, hit all of the major points that reflect who Carmen is. She's diligent about getting work back, committed to doing that, one of the city values. She is smart. She always makes sure to provide options to the department with how to deal with developers or developer demands. And then finally, she does it in a way that's approachable and personable. She's very kind and open to everybody in the city about providing advice and not coming off in a way that obviously pushes anybody away and, "Don't bother me." So we love that about her. We love that about everyone in our office who demonstrate those things as well. And Carmen, congratulations from our office and the city council.
So thank you so much to the mayor and council. I really want to thank Benita Crook in community development. She is a joy to work with, and I really appreciate the kind things she said in her nomination. Employee Recognition Committee, thanks for all the work in the process. I understand nobody really likes it when the attorneys have to get involved, so it's very nice to know that people appreciate our input. For everybody who came on Monday to eat cake and for the announcement, I really appreciate it. It's nice to see that in the city manager's office, every level of leadership came to celebrate, and it's nice that everybody takes that time. Like I said on Monday, I can't really take a whole lot of credit because I feel like everything that Benita put in her nomination is reflective of the City Attorney's Office, and it's reflective of the City of Las Vegas culture as a whole. I'm really lucky to work with supportive and talented professionals. And so with that, I want to thank all of my colleagues. And so with that, I want to thank all of my colleagues. I want to thank everybody in the City Attorney's Office for making me look good. Basically, everybody in purchasing and contracts, everybody in strategic services that I work with, fire and rescue I've worked with, the people in community development, my lunchtime workout crew. And I also want to really thank my family who's here today, my husband, my daughter, my mom, my sister. It's been a joy coming back to public service and being here at the city, so this is really like the cherry on top. So thanks, everyone.
Nice job.
Should we take one with her and then have her family come too?
Absolutely.
Baby. In red.
Yeah, of course.
Do you want me to hold that thing?
More than you.
Welcome.
Just pull her shirt down.
I can move back.
No, let's take your sunglasses off.
It was a nice.
Oh, Mom.
Thank you.
I love it.
And now we have another special recognition, and I'd like to turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz to recognize our partnership that's helping so many in our community. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I have the privilege of closing out ceremonials today. And after a star-studded morning with UNLV representation and our Employee of the Month, Ms. Carmen Gilbert, it is my honor to celebrate Freddy Godinez and Alexander Stabler. If they can come on up. Mr. Freddy Godinez and Alexander Stabler are an incredible couple that are not only residents of our fabulous city and Ward III, but they own their own business, Frederick Alexander, in the heart of my ward at 1110 East Bonneville Avenue. They're equally devoted to using their skills and talents, not just to beautify the spaces that they're contracted to work on, but also to uplift our great city in any way that they can. They give a lot back, and I just want to give you a flavor of who these men are. And so Freddy Godinez brings his technical background as well as a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from UNLV. And he also obtained his master's in urban planning from the University of Southern California. Freddy, he says about the work that they do that they really try to help push their clients to go bold and to make fun, beautiful design decisions that are meaningful, impactful, and functional. Now, Alexander Stabler came to Vegas as a professional performer, initially for Cirque du Soleil, and worked as a performer up until 2020, when his show La Rev closed. But he dove right into this work after that, so it's never, you know, one bad turn, a good one kind of comes around. And so they were able to start this endeavor, and he says that he leaned into design because design has a strong impact, just like performing does. In a performance, you have the opportunity, and these are his words, "In a performance, you have the opportunity to captivate an audience and have a profound emotional impact on them." I feel like design has the same impact, but even more meaningful and powerful because it impacts people's daily lives, and that's something that's always been important to Freddy and to him, is to have a positive impact on people and create meaningful change for our community. So recently, Mayor Berkeley, MPT Knutson, Councilwoman Summer Armstrong, and myself had the privilege of attending the ribbon cutting of the Gavin Gorjean Health Center, also in the ward. And it was formerly the Wolfson Medical Building at the intersection of Las Vegas Boulevard and Charleston. I was not only impressed by the incredible range of health services offered to our neighbors now through that FQHC, but also by the beauty. It was breathtaking to walk through the transformation of that once-upon-a-time bank and then dilapidated, half-utilized medical building, and now to the wonderful, beautiful health center that it has become. If you haven't been there, I highly recommend you swing by and check it out. The health center truly feels like an oasis for the members of the LGBTQIA+ community, but also all our residents in Las Vegas that also need its services. Some of our most vulnerable neighbors seek their health services at their greatest time of need and crises, and it brings me such great joy and reassurance to know that they are welcomed by the caring staff there at the Gavin Gorjean Health Center, but also into a thoughtfully designed environment. And you can kind of see some of the slides are going on the screens, and that kind of just gives you a glimpse into the transformation these gentlemen were involved with. We returned last week for another tour of Gavin Gorjean Health Center, and again, my team had not seen the transformation. They were blown away by all the incredible attention to detail. I would like to invite John Waldron and Leanna Ramirez up because they're going to speak a little bit about this impactful work, but I want to thank them publicly for charting the course and delivering this health center to our community. Can we give them a round of applause? It just elevates everyone's mood from the moment you walk in because Alexander and Freddy designed it just so beautifully and just captivated from the moment you set foot in there. It's, you know, from the cozy telehealth rooms to behavioral health therapy rooms, and not only is it pleasing to your eyes, but it's like just bedazzled everywhere with their, what do you call it? Sophisticated funk. That's their, that's their brand, right there. And so Freddy and Alexander understood the vision for the health center, and with that, I'm going to hand over the mic to John and to Leanna so they can tell you about how these gentlemen definitely made their life easier and better, and now we're, as a community, enjoying the amazing health center.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for everything that you do for us and everyone on the city council, the mayor. We appreciate you very much. And one of the things about our clinic that the Councilwoman talked about is that we serve everybody in the community, and we don't turn anybody away. And when we created this space, we could have just made a very clinical-looking place where people just funnel through, but we wanted our community to feel safe, to feel welcome, and everyone that comes through the doors to feel welcome. And so when we started working with Freddy and Alex, it was a game changer for us. When you come there, you go down in the basement, as you see in the pictures, and there's windows. Think about that for a minute. There's windows in the mental health space, so you don't feel like you're in the basement. And you really just have to come and see it. The work that they did just changed everything for us, everything for our community just blew us away. And nobody speaks more passionately about it than our Chief Healthcare Officer, Dr. Leanna Ramirez. So I'll just let her say a few quick words.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. So as I was watching the pictures and hearing Councilwoman talk about our space, I'm tearing up because it's truly an honor to be here with you and with all of the community. And just being able to share in the passion that you brought to the building and being able to have you with us to build this space and to create this amazing place for people, so inspiring. And let me tell you guys, when I walked in the room and I see these guys there with an iron, ironing the curtains so that the curtains, I was like, yes, yes. So truly, truly, to find people with like-minded passion and like-minded hearts that care and share and spread kindness is truly an honor. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. And so to finalize, Freddy, obviously, and Alexander understood the vision for the health center from the get-go and exceeded all expectations. And not only did Alexander and Freddy work within budget, but they helped secure discounts, donations, and they worked with local vendors and local artists like Randy Mendre, who designed and created the beautiful rainbow piece that you've seen in some of the shots, "You Belong." And it's his signature steel medium that is a beautiful addition. It's one of my favorite takeaways from touring the space. Alexander and Freddy, you've dedicated not just your valuable time to this effort, but you're currently also launching Friends of Hunt Ridge Circle Park, a nonprofit that is partnering with UNLV landscape architecture students to develop some creative proposals about how we could be smart about activating the park that is a gem and a jewel to the community around it. And so beyond these contributions to the health center and the Friends of Hunt Ridge Circle Park, Freddy and Alexander are actively involved in so many other noteworthy causes like AIDS, Aid for AIDS of Nevada, the Center, Young Equal, and Actors Equality. So again, thank you so much. And on behalf of the city, we have a little something for you, and it just says, "This is to recognize Alexander Stabler and Freddy Gomez for their exceptional contributions to the City of Las Vegas. Thank you for your vision, generosity, and unwavering commitment to uplift our Ward III community." And now we want to hear from you.
Thank you. Wow, this is amazing. I mean, first of all, with the center project, we met these two at an event where the Bears were, the Bears community were giving donations, and they were giving donations to Young Equal. And we were eager to meet them because we work across the street from them. And so we introduced ourselves and said, "We're neighbors. If you need anything from us, please let us know. Cup of sugar, we're here for you." They came to us with this project, and honestly, Leanna, we just fed off your passion. Your passion drove this. You wanted to provide a space that created care for everybody, for everybody that needs it and deserves it. And that was what fueled our passion and our ability to create this beautiful project. So thank you. And thank you to our friends and to family who are friends and everybody here. It's just been a wild journey, and we're just really, really grateful for what we're able to do and how we're able to turn our passion into purpose.
I echo everything Alex says. I also want to thank Lili Diaz, our Councilwoman, and the rest of the city council, and as well all of our friends and family that are here present with our award. And we can't be more grateful to our partners, the center, John, and Leanna, and Lily as well. Thank you.
And I do know your last name. It's Godinez. So sorry. Freddy Godinez. So we're going to go ahead and take a picture with our honorees?
So thank you so much to the mayor and council. I really want to thank Benita Crook in Community Development. She is a joy to work with, and I really appreciate the kind things she said in her nomination. Employee Recognition Committee, thanks for all the work in the process. I understand nobody really likes it when the attorneys have to get involved, so it's very nice to know that people appreciate our input. For everybody who came on Monday to eat cake and for the announcement, I really appreciate it. It's nice to see that in the city manager's office, every level of leadership came to celebrate, and it's nice that everybody takes that time. Like I said on Monday, I can't really take a whole lot of credit because I feel like everything that Benita put in her nomination is reflective of the City Attorney's Office, and it's reflective of the City of Las Vegas culture as a whole. I'm really lucky to work with supportive and talented professionals. And so with that, I want to thank all of my colleagues. I want to thank everybody in the City Attorney's Office for making me look good. Basically, everybody in purchasing and contracts, everybody in strategic services that I work with, fire and rescue I've worked with, the people in community development, my lunchtime workout crew. And I also want to really thank my family who's here today, my husband, my daughter, my mom, my sister. It's been a joy coming back to public service and being here at the city, so this is really like the cherry on top. So thanks, everyone.
Nice job. Great job.
Should we take one with her and then have her family come too?
Absolutely.
Baby. In red.
Yeah, of course.
Do you want me to hold that thing?
More than you.
Just pull her shirt down.
No, let's take your sunglasses off.
It was a nice.
Oh, Mom.
Here.
And now we have another special recognition, and I'd like to turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz to recognize our partnership that's helping so many in our community. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I have the privilege of closing out ceremonials today. And after a star-studded morning with UNLV representation and our Employee of the Month, Ms. Carmen Gilbert, it is my honor to celebrate Freddy Godinez and Alexander Stabler. If they can come on up. Mr. Freddy Godinez and Alexander Stabler are an incredible couple that are not only residents of our fabulous city and Ward III, but they own their own business, Frederick Alexander, in the heart of my ward at 1110 East Bonneville Avenue. They're equally devoted to using their skills and talents, not just to beautify the spaces that they're contracted to work on, but also to uplift our great city in any way that they can. They give a lot back, and I just want to give you a flavor of who these men are. And so Freddy Godinez brings his technical background as well as a bachelor's degree in landscape architecture from UNLV. And he also obtained his master's in urban planning from the University of Southern California. Freddy, he says about the work that they do that they really try to help push their clients to go bold and to make fun, beautiful, design decisions that are meaningful, impactful, and functional. Now, Alexander Stabler came to Vegas as a professional performer, initially for Cirque du Soleil, and worked as a performer up until 2020, when his show La Rev closed. But he dove right into this work after that, so it's never, you know, one bad turn, a good one kind of comes around. And so they were able to start this endeavor, and he says that he leaned into design because design has a strong impact, just like performing does. In a performance, you have the opportunity, and these are his words, "In a performance, you have the opportunity to captivate an audience and have a profound emotional impact on them." I feel like design has the same impact, but even more meaningful and powerful because it impacts people's daily lives, and that's something that's always been important to Freddy and to him, is to have a positive impact on people and create meaningful change for our community. So recently, Mayor Berkeley, MPT Knutson, Councilwoman Summer Armstrong, and myself had the privilege of attending the ribbon cutting of the Gavin Gorjean Health Center, also in the ward. And it was formerly the Wolfson Medical Building at the intersection of Las Vegas Boulevard and Charleston. I was not only impressed by the incredible range of health services offered to our neighbors now through that FQHC, but also by the beauty. It was breathtaking to walk through the transformation of that once-up-a-time bank and then dilapidated, half-utilized medical building, and now to the wonderful, beautiful health center that it has become. If you haven't been there, I highly recommend you swing by and check it out. The health center truly feels like an oasis for the members of the LGBTQIA+ community, but also all our residents in Las Vegas that also need its services. Some of our most vulnerable neighbors seek their health services at their greatest time of need and crises, and it brings me such great joy and reassurance to know that they are welcomed by the caring staff there at the Gavin Gorjean Health Center, but also into a thoughtfully designed environment. And you can kind of see some of the slides are going on the screens, and that kind of just gives you a glimpse into the transformation these gentlemen were involved with. We returned last week for another tour of Gavin Gorjean Health Center, and again, my team had not seen the transformation. They were blown away by all the incredible attention to detail. I would like to invite John Waldron and Leanna Ramirez up because they're going to speak a little bit about this impactful work, but I want to thank them publicly for charting the course and delivering this health center to our community. Can we give them a round of applause? It just elevates everyone's mood from the moment you walk in because Alexander and Freddy designed it just so beautifully and just captivated from the moment you set foot in there. It's, you know, from the cozy telehealth rooms to behavioral health therapy rooms, and not only is it pleasing to your eyes, but it's like just bedazzled everywhere with their, what do you call it? Sophisticated funk. That's their, that's their brand, right there. And so Freddy and Alexander understood the vision for the health center, and with that, I'm going to hand over the mic to John and to Leanna so they can tell you about how these gentlemen definitely made their life easier and better, and now we're, as a community, enjoying the amazing health center.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for everything that you do for us and everyone on the city council, the mayor. We appreciate you very much. And one of the things about our clinic that the Councilwoman talked about is that we serve everybody in the community, and we don't turn anybody away. And when we created this space, we could have just made a very clinical-looking place where people just funnel through, but we wanted our community to feel safe, to feel welcome, and everyone that comes through the doors to feel welcome. And so when we started working with Freddy and Alex, it was a game changer for us. When you come there, you go down in the basement, as you see in the pictures, and there's windows. Think about that for a minute. There's windows in the mental health space, so you don't feel like you're in the basement. And you really just have to come and see it. The work that they did just changed everything for us, everything for our community just blew us away. And nobody speaks more passionately about it than our Chief Healthcare Officer, Dr. Leanna Ramirez. So I'll just let her say a few quick words.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. So as I was watching the pictures and hearing Councilwoman talk about our space, I'm tearing up because it's truly an honor to be here with you and with all of the community. And just being able to share in the passion that you brought to the building and being able to have you with us to build this space and to create this amazing place for people, so inspiring. And let me tell you guys, when I walked in the room and I see these guys there with an iron, ironing the curtains so that the curtains, I was like, yes, yes. So truly, truly, to find people with like-minded passion and like-minded hearts that care and share and spread kindness is truly an honor. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. And so to finalize, Freddy, obviously, and Alexander understood the vision for the health center from the get-go and exceeded all expectations. And not only did Alexander and Freddy work within budget, but they helped secure discounts, donations, and they worked with local vendors and local artists like Randy Mandre, who designed and created the beautiful rainbow piece that you've seen in some of the shots, "You Belong." And it's his signature steel medium that is a beautiful addition. It's one of my favorite takeaways from touring the space. Alexander and Freddy, you've dedicated not just your valuable time to this effort, but you're currently also launching Friends of Hunt Ridge Circle Park, a nonprofit that is partnering with UNLV landscape architecture students to develop some creative proposals about how we could be smart about activating the park that is a gem and a jewel to the community around it. And so beyond these contributions to the health center and the Friends of Hunt Ridge Circle Park, Freddy and Alexander are actively involved in so many other noteworthy causes like AIDS, Aid for AIDS of Nevada, the Center, Young Equal, and Actors Equality. So again, thank you so much. And on behalf of the city, we have a little something for you, and it just says, "This is to recognize Alexander Stabler and Freddy Gomez for their exceptional contributions to the City of Las Vegas. Thank you for your vision, generosity, and unwavering commitment to uplift our Ward III community." And now we want to hear from you.
Thank you. Wow, this is amazing. I mean, first of all, with the center project, we met these two at an event where the Bears were, the Bears community were giving donations, and they were giving donations to Young Equal. And we were eager to meet them because we work across the street from them. And so we introduced ourselves and said, "We're neighbors. If you need anything from us, please let us know. Cup of sugar, we're here for you." They came to us with this project, and honestly, Leanna, we just fed off your passion. Your passion drove this. You wanted to provide a space that created care for everybody, for everybody that needs it and deserves it. And that was what fueled our passion and our ability to create this beautiful project. So thank you. And thank you to our friends and to family who are friends and everybody here. It's just been a wild journey, and we're just really, really grateful for what we're able to do and how we're able to turn our passion into purpose.
I echo everything Alex says. I also want to thank Lili Diaz, our Councilwoman, and the rest of the city council, and as well all of our friends and family that are here present with our award. And we can't be more grateful to our partners, the center, John, and Leanna, and Lili as
may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time limit for two minutes. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name.
Hi, Bruce Cowan. I have properties at North Seventh, three on, we have three on North Eighth, two on North Ninth, two on North Thirteenth, two on North Fourteenth, three on North Fifteenth, and a bunch more in Councilwoman Diaz's district. And we manage them ourselves. And I just want to say that I'm here to talk about the Cashman Development Project. I think it's wonderful. I think it's a shot in the arm that the area needs. I think we all recognize the city needs more revenue, and we need to get revenue from non-traditional areas. So the more we can get that going, the better. I do think that there should be access for the property, for the unit owners on North Ninth, and also for the police, just the unit owners and the police, as there is a station right there at Bonanza and North Ninth, and they could get to that development within about 30 seconds instead of having to drive all the way around. I also think that the development should be called Cashman at Las Vegas Boulevard. The main entrance should be Las Vegas Boulevard. I think that you'll see that they'll sell faster, they'll get more revenue for the city at a higher price point. It's much more desirable to have Cashman at Las Vegas Boulevard. There's also another development that's being looked at on Tenth and Wilson, I think you're voting on today. I think that's exactly what we need, are more of those kinds of developments that are being done. And I look, I think if you drive around those areas, we're the ones that have the older properties that we've restored that have all the murals on them, and most of which are in Councilwoman Sommer's Armstrong's district. Anyway, the thing is, it looks beautiful. That whole area is starting to look really great. There's a lot of vibrancy in it, and I think it's East Fremont could be one of the hottest areas in town in just short order. So
Thank you so much.
So I hope you take my considerations into effect, especially with regards to the access points at Cashman. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you. Thank you for all of your service.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak with the City Council? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and the distinguished City Council. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item. It's, I got this card in the mail about the Housing Authority. It's on the last part of the agenda. I think it's like number 60. So I really am concerned that the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority has failed to
Would you mind stating your name for the record?
I am so sorry.
Perfectly all right.
Catherine Duncan. Thank you. 1001 F Street. I'm concerned that the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority has not gone beyond the call of duty to do public engagement around the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority Marble Manor project. We have consistently requested that the Housing Authority establish a STEM lab in the neighborhood that we could do meaningful public engagement. There are so many landowners that are coming to me saying, what's going on at Marble Manor? They're tearing down Marble Manor. And I know from where you're sitting, you could think, how could someone not possibly know what's going on? But there are still people in our neighborhood who don't have internet. They're not getting the newspaper, but they still are required to be notified in a meaningful way based on federal standards. So we're asking the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority to help resource STEM. All we're asking for is one penny out of every dollar that they've gotten to have meaningful public engagement by resourcing a STEM lab that we could bring in the residents, the churches, the businesses, and the schools so that we can come up with a safety plan. Our neighborhood doesn't have a safety plan. We don't have a broadband infrastructure plan, and we don't have a transportation plan surrounding all of the things that are going on in the Hunt Ridge Plan. So we would really like for you to, Mayor, to encourage the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority to set aside one penny out of every dollar that they get and to do meaningful public engagement around the whole Hunt Ridge Plan, which is really impacted by what's going on at Marble Manor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duncan. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the City Council? In that case, we will move on to Agenda Item Eight. For possible action, any items from the 9:30 a.m. session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several items. The first is 43B, 25-0291 SUP2. Applicant is New Live Solutions LLC, owner K&amp;K Property Management, and appeal of the denial by the Planning Commission on a portion of the following land use entitlement project request of 1502 South Las Vegas Boulevard. There's a withdrawal request by the applicant. 51A through 51B, 25-0326ZON1, and STR1. Applicant owner is Holy Cross Missionary Baptist Church Incorporated on 0.38 acres at 1328 West Lake Mead Boulevard. There's an abeyance request to December 17, 2025, requested by the applicant. 55A through 55C, 25-0335A, GPA1, ZON1, STR1. Applicant is Integrity Concrete LLC. Owner is Coleman Street LLC on 1.42 acres at the southwest corner of Ricky Road and Tom Boulevard. There's an abeyance request by the applicant to the January 21, 2026 City Council meeting. 57A through 57B, 25-0382 GPA1 and ZON1. Applicant is Greystone Nevada LLC. Owner is State of Nevada Division of State Lands on 22.77 acres at the northeast corner of Washington Avenue and Las Vegas Boulevard. There's an abeyance request by the applicant to the January 21, 2026 City Council meeting. 58A through 58B, 25-0383 GPA1, ZON1. Applicant is Greystone Nevada LLC. Owner, City of Las Vegas on 50.54 acres, generally bounded by Washington Avenue, Maryland Parkway, Sagman Street, and Las Vegas Boulevard. There's an abeyance to the January 21, 2026 made at the request of the applicant. And 61A through 62MB, 25-0436 RLC1 and RLC2. Applicant is TriPoint Homes in Nevada Incorporated. Owner is KL LB Buy 3 LLC on the north side of Log Cabin Way, approximately 630 feet west of Alpine Ridgeway. There's an abeyance request by the applicant to the December 17, 2025 City Council meeting, and that'll be my motion.
Thank you so much. Shall we vote on the motion? Please post. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Agenda Item Nine, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the October 15, 2025 regular City Council meeting. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve item nine.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Agenda Items 10 through 25 are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Mayor Protem, may I have a motion for the consent agenda for items 10 through 24?
Move to approve items 10 through 24.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. We are now going to move to item 62, out of order, to accommodate the President of UNLV's very busy schedule. This is a report by Chris Heavy, Ph.D., Interim President of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, regarding an update on the various programs and recent activities of the university. This affects all wards. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Honored to be here on behalf of UNLV, and thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about the university that is, carries the same name as the City of Las Vegas proudly. We talk about it as the anchor institution of Southern Nevada. And as we talked about earlier this morning, it is a Carnegie R1 institution, and we talk about our vision as transforming our community through engagement and education. And these are just some of the figures that show the scope of the work that we do at UNLV. I think people are generally familiar with the institution and how large it's become. I'd love to tell a little bit of the story of its growth. And this is a slide that talks about the 17 counties in Nevada and their population. And on this slide, you'll see that there's really only three lines that are distinguishable. The 15 counties at the bottom that have had very similar small populations from 1900 to today. And around 1940, we see that we start to see some dramatic population growth in Nevada, and the lines start to separate. And it's not hard for people to distinguish what the three county, or the two county lines are that are distinguishable from the other 15. We see the explosive growth of Southern Nevada that starts in about 1960, right about the time that UNLV is founded. People believe that we need an institution of higher education to represent Southern Nevada. And this shows the similar population demographics for the cities of the state of Nevada. And you know which line on there represents the amazing city of Las Vegas, which separates from Reno in terms of overall population, right about the time that UNLV is founded in 1957, and continues its explosive growth, especially starting in 1990 and beyond. And so here we are in Southern Nevada, recognizing that the explosive growth of our community has also created challenges. And so we have been playing a game of catch-up for the last, you know, 50 years plus, where we're trying to basically deliver higher education and services to our community at scale, but have struggled to keep up with that explosive growth. And I think these figures are well-known to the people in this room, where we're low in many key characters, demographics of professionals, mental health providers, doctors, registered nurses, teachers, et cetera. And so we have been working to try to catch up with that growth. And you'll see on this slide that since 1980, UNLV has tripled in size, but Southern Nevada has actually quadrupled in population during that basic 45-year period. And so we haven't even grown quite as fast as the explosive growth of Southern Nevada. But it's also some pictures of our campus to see how it's changed from the early days when it was really remote and dirt road running down Maryland Parkway, and now is in the heart of the urban center of Las Vegas. And this just shows the kind of higher education in the state of Nevada, across the whole state. UNLV has become now the largest institution of higher education in the state of Nevada, and with UNLV and CSN combined, about 60 or plus percent of all of the higher education in Nevada by headcount and by FTE. And the word that we most talk about, and the mayor highlighted so well in her remarks, is opportunity, that UNLV is a place of opportunity. We primarily serve residents of Nevada, especially residents of Southern Nevada, many of whom come from lower-income families, and more than half will be the first in their families to earn a college degree. And we try to make our education affordable with about 25% of our students attending with no direct costs paid for to UNLV because of the financial aid that we're able to offer. And so we are delivering impact at scale. Last year, we graduated about 7,000 students from UNLV, and most of them stay in the state of Nevada to serve our community. We're trying to make sure that every graduate graduates workforce-ready with valuable credentials to serve the community. And we're definitely focused primarily on what the community needs from us. And as was also recognized in our earlier remarks, the School of Medicine is going to be a key asset to try to meet the healthcare needs. We have dramatically expanded our nursing program, and now are the largest nursing program in the state of Nevada, building our mental health capacity and serving the community, and also doing a lot to expand the teacher pipeline. And these are just some statistics that talk about where key areas of growth are, all of which are in disciplines that I think the council recognizes are key to the vibrancy and success of Southern Nevada, including adding key new programs in cybersecurity, insurance, and risk management, applied health sciences, and micro-credentials that deliver high-value skills to our residents. And as we talked about earlier, partnership is going to be key for our success. And so I'll talk a little bit more about the medical district on the next slide, but also work in the innovation corridor for Clark County, a lot of work with arts across the community, and cultural opportunities, et cetera, serving many areas in the community. We are a major resident in the medical district, as you know well, with three of the programs that are highlighted there, medical, dental, and nursing, being housed in the medical district. We have about 600,000 square feet of space in the medical district, and serve thousands of students serving in the medical district and in health fields. Just kind of some of the overall statistics about what we're doing to try to advance community health, as well as particularly in the area of mental health, where there's tremendous needs. And we're excited to have established a mental health care clinic in the medical district, and we're looking to dramatically expand the footprint of the mental health services we offer in the medical district, as well as working to add new programs that will tremendously increase the number of graduates prepared to serve our mental health needs of the community, and really appreciate the partnership of Councilwoman Knutson in helping us drive forward some of these programs, including a new PsyD program that which will come online soon, that will focus on children with neurodevelopmental disorders, and a new undergraduate degree, which will graduate a lot of students to help at primary level of kind of initial interventions with children with mental health concerns. And thinking about tomorrow, obviously, online education's a big part of what we do. We have an incredible new immersive learning space, and that's going to become an increasing part of the curriculum. Artificial intelligence is going to impact all of our lives, and we're moving fast to incorporate that into our curriculum, and doing research on issues that are really going to be vital to the long-term success of our community, such as water resources, sustainability, et cetera, all of things that will be crucial for the success of Southern Nevada. So thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk about UNLV and the community that we love to serve, and happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, we'd like, oh, pardon me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take another opportunity to kind of update the council on some of the work that we've been working on together with the support of Mike Jensen and Dina Babski in our Economic and Urban Development Department. So a little while ago, we met with some of your colleagues in the higher education space, and the outcomes of that meeting was the city is working with each of the institutions to find what are the degree programs offered in the mental health and healthcare space, as well as what are the gaps in our community, to see if we as a community need to come together and focus in on developing specific professional specialties to better serve our community. And then we're also at Mike's, with Mike's leadership, we're doing an asset mapping of the medical district to determine what is the highest and best use of land within the medical district. The university owns quite a bit of land, and I think there's a higher and better use for that land. So that's, that's my request, is if we can keep working towards the land in the medical district, because we can provide better care and more training for students, and then looking at what other additional professional licensers, degree programs that UNLV could offer that would meet the needs of our community. And I, I think my guess is, is that if we do that jointly with the state legislature, maybe with our federal delegation, it makes a much more compelling case than any one of us going at it individually. And I appreciate you've been a breath of fresh air over the last year, working with you, and I very, very much appreciate it because it means a whole lot to my family and to the people that I serve.
Thank you, Councilwoman Knutson. We're excited to continue that partnership and, as you said, figure out what more we can do together to serve the community. We want to thank you for your leadership in that space, and really can't say how more about how excited we are about partnering with the City of Las Vegas.
Yes, Ms. Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Dr. Heavy, we're really excited that you have the length of time you've worked at UNLV, and that you're hungry to come, and you really do have a pulse of what the university has offered, but where the opportunities for growth and partnership lie. So I guess it's more of a, I'm looking forward to hearing the ways that we can advance many different areas that may be lacking in terms of workforce development, in terms of academia overall. We know that medical services are a really big need, but our education pipeline is also a really major need. And so in going out there and meeting some of your folks that you brought along today for UNLV Day, there's lifelong learning, looking for opportunities of how do we bring these services and these classes closer to some seniors that may have mobility issues. So I just want to say we're here to always support UNLV in any endeavor in reaching all of the community members that it needs to throughout all of its diverse programming.
Well, thank you for those comments. We're Councilwoman Diaz. We're really excited to bring UNLV out in the community more, and excited to put in proposals to potentially occupy some more space in the City of Las Vegas to be able to offer some of our lifelong learning and high-value credentials to the workforce and others who will be able to benefit from that.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else on the council wishing to comment? All right, seeing none, Ms. Newby, do you have anything you would like to share with us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just so glad to see everyone in red today. And UNLV is such an asset to our community and so important to the future of our economy here. I'm glad to have President Heavy here, and super excited for what may come. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you again. This is a report only, and no action is required.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for joining us today. Agenda, we're back to regular order. Agenda Item 25, abeyance item regarding the fair market value of City of Las Vegas-owned real property located at the west side of Oso Blanca Road and north of TP Lane in anticipation of the sale of the property on an internet auction website, Ward Six. Ms. Bruni, please note this item is related to Council Item 21R-71-2025. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Ms. Boyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Teresa Boyce, Real Estate Manager. And I think we're just opening the hearing. Anybody have any comments?
All right, thank you so much. Is there anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Thank you so much. This is a public hearing only, and no action is required. We will now hear related items 26 and 27 together. 26, regarding the fair market value lease rate of the City of Las Vegas-owned Civic Plaza retail suites based on a market rent study regarding two retail spaces as part of the new Civic Plaza dated June 30, 2025, by Anderson Valuation Group LLC, which is in anticipation of leasing the 2,547.5 square feet located at 525 South Main Street, Suite 150. And Agenda Item 27, R-80-2025, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to certain undertaking of the City of Las Vegas in connection with the retail lease agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Gonzo Lease Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and Gonzo Madness, LLC, Concerning the Retail Lease Located at 525 South Main, Suite 150, is in the Best Interest of the Public and to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the Goals and Objectives of the City of Las Vegas Downtown Master Plan. These items are in Ward 3. Ms. Diaz. Item 26 is a public hearing which I now declare open. Ms. Babsky.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Dina Babsky, Director of Economic and Urban Development. And with me here today at the podium is Mr. Robert Gonzalez and Mrs. Maribel Gonzalez. Welcome.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council.
Hello.
So let me just get started, that we are so excited, because this has been in the works for many months now. As you know, we've been keeping it a secret, because, you know, until this meeting happens and we get a vote, we couldn't really talk about it. But we're so excited to bring it forward for your consideration today. Teriyaki Madness, I'm sure all of us have had a chance to have a teriyaki bowl. They are all over the southern region, or the Southern Nevada region, but I don't know if you're aware that Teriyaki Madness is actually is a homegrown success story. The very first shop opened on Maryland Parkway back in 2003. Since then, the franchise has gone national with almost 200 locations nationally in 41 states. And so we're so excited to bring it back home to Civic Plaza in Las Vegas. So with that said, I also want to highlight the fact that, you know, we now have office tenants at Civic Plaza, we have open spaces, we have programming that's coming online in the, in the plaza itself, and so to complete that experience, we need food. And so bringing Teriyaki Madness is definitely going to complete, complete the story. Without further ado, just a little bit about our partners on the other end of the lease. So as I mentioned, Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Maribel Gonzalez, they own, this is going to be their fourth shop, Port Teriyaki Madness here. So we know that they know what they're doing. They've proven that they're successful in other locations, and so we're thrilled to have a proven business owner to come to Civic Plaza. Again, longtime Nevadans, they've been here for many, many years. I'll let them tell their story when I pass over the mic to them. Now, some, some points about the lease itself. So it's the first-floor retail space on the, in Building 1, so facing Main Street, 2,500 square feet. It is currently gray shell, so Mr. Gonzalez and his team will be taking on the tenant improvements to get the restaurant built out. And that is the portion that you all voted on earlier during the RDA meeting, the $600,000 contribution. The lease term is 10 years, the initial term, plus two options for five-year extensions, and we're hopeful and certain that that's going to happen. And then overall lease value over the 20-year lease term is $2.27 million. Since it's a public hearing, I do have to state that the, the appraised value per square foot for the retail space at Civic Plaza is $3.25. Anticipated opening is quarter 2 of 2026, so right before the summer starts, and we're able to get on the plaza and enjoy a bowl of teriyaki. With that, a couple of screenshots on the floor plan. The restaurant will seat a little bit over 50, you know, clients. Obviously, it's going to be pickup deliveries as well, because we know that, you know, this is going to be a very busy area in just a few months when all of our tenants are going to move in. And so we're excited to be able to provide this fast casual option for everyone in this area. Of course, we all love to see signage and pictures, so there will be a sign on the main street that's going to, you know, obviously make it very visible that Teriyaki Madness location is inside Civic Plaza. And with that, I can't hold my excitement any longer. I'm going to pass the word over to, over to Mr. Gonzalez.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. It's a privilege to be up here. Our background is, we're just a small family. We started, I want my wife in the casino business, and I worked all over the city. And now we're entrepreneurs in the city of Las Vegas, which is a blessing. This is a town where we meet and greet many, many people, millions of places all over the country, and we are happy to serve this community with teriyaki bowls. It's a pleasure to be part of Dane. I think, thank you so much for being a, I would say, calm and collective and taking your time with us. And it's a special thanks to Jonathan King, who put up with me for many months. I'm very, very tough to work with. But it's because we come from a small background, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we feel that this is the right thing for us, to grow this city and to be able to employ people in the city is, is a blessing. On behalf of my wife and I, thank you once again for everything you've done. Councilwoman, we met you the other day. Ms. Diaz, we are very pleased to be in your ward, and again, thank you for your time that day. And again, thank you, everybody here. We appreciate the time.
Thanks so much. We're looking forward to your opening.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? No action is required on Item 26. Is there a motion on Related Item 27? Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And before I make my motion, I do want to say that this would be about a third location serving Ward 3 residents. They have one already established on Nellis and Charleston that kind of serves that part of the city. They have another one on Sahara and Decatur, even though I think they may be in Ward 1, they serve the people that kind of live on the other side in Ward 3. And this is another three-for-three. So the locations you have in the city are definitely of service to my residents, and I did want you to give us a glimpse. If everything goes as it's supposed to, when could we start enjoying a teriyaki bowl right here?
Second before the summer.
If everything goes accordingly, we hope to open late March, first of April, mid-April, hopefully. Yes, we're going to push to get it done very rapidly.
I wanted everyone to like, take notes, so that as soon as your doors open, they go and support. So with that, I'm going to move to approve Agenda Item 27.
All right, shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you so much.
Agenda Item Number 28, R-81-2025, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding That the Proposed Lease Agreement Between the State of Nevada Department of Administration, Public Works Division Buildings and Grounds For and On Behalf of the Nevada Secretary of State and City of Las Vegas Located at 70 East Bonanza Avenue, Suite 100, For A Lease Term Of 10 Years With Two Five-Year Options Is In The Best Interest Of The Public. This is Ward 3. Ms. Diaz. Ms. Babsky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Dina Babsky, Director of EUD, and I am still super excited, because this is another very, very exciting moment for us, again, having to do with Civic Plaza and our wonderful, wonderful tenants. With me at the podium here today is Deputy Secretary of State, Mr. Ruben Rodriguez. Welcome.
Good morning, thank you.
Welcome.
So, again, you know, we've been working on Civic Plaza for a few months, and this lease has been in negotiations, I want to say probably about six to eight months or so. So it has taken a little bit of time, a little diligence from both teams on the state side and the city side. And, you know, the thing that I learned that was very impressive is that the Secretary of State is the third highest-ranking official in the state. So as we all know, high-ranking offices don't move lightly, and the fact that the Secretary of State's office has chosen Civic Plaza as its future long-term home is a great show of confidence in the downtown and everything that we have to offer here. Another exciting component of this deal is the fact that, as you all know, we've been building out Civic Plaza with a big vision of bringing this economic development, business support hub to downtown. And having Secretary of State's office right then and there is going to complete that synergy. They're going, we're essentially bringing public-facing services, everything that you see on the screen now that the Secretary's office supports, to the residents where they actually live, work, and are able to get the services here and, and, you know, including everything that we have to offer between the Vegas Chamber, the Workforce Connections, the city business licensing team, and of course, you know, the, everything that the Secretary of State has to offer. And I'm sure our own city clerk's office is super excited to have Secretary of State right across the plaza as well. Again, a little bit about the lease term itself. It is the first floor in Building 2, so that's the same building where Vegas Chamber and the Workforce Connections are tenants now, a little over 4,000 square feet. The Secretary's office and the staff will have a similar type of access to the event spaces that we have offered to all of our other tenants. The initial term is 10 years with two-year, with two-five-year extensions. Again, we are hopeful that the full term is executed, and we will have you all here for 20 years. The lease value is a little bit over $3 million for the 20-year term, and we are currently starting the TI build-out, and if everything goes well, like Mayor said earlier, we're hoping to have the Secretary and his team to take occupancy June 1 of 2026. So without further ado, I'd like to pass the mic over to the Deputy Secretary of State.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Ruben Rodriguez, Deputy Secretary of State. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak on Agenda Item Number 28. On behalf of Secretary of State Cisco Aguilar, I want to express our strong support for this lease agreement and for the continued partnership between the State of Nevada and the city of Las Vegas. Relocating our North Las Vegas office to the City of Las Vegas Civic Plaza is not simply an address change. It's a strategic investment in access, efficiency, and services to our community. The Civic Plaza relocation places the Secretary of State's office at the corner of one of the fastest-growing business quarters in the state. Being here means that entrepreneurs, nonprofits, and small business owners who rely on our services now have easier, more direct access to our resources that helps start and grow and maintain operations. For many small business owners, especially first-time business filers, emerging entrepreneurs, and sole proprietors, proximity matters. Being located at Civic Plaza allows for us to meet people where they are. It places our team in walking distance to our other city departments, workforce partners, permitting offices, and community organizations the small businesses interact with every single day. It reduces runaround that many small businesses often experience. Instead of creating a one-stop shop, as previously before, we will, we will create that here in the city of Las Vegas Civic Plaza. This move also strengthens our ability to serve the public more efficiently. Civic Plaza provides a modernized, accessible space that supports a level of service that Nevadas, the Nevadans expect. With improved access to in-person services, leading to quicker processing times and streamlined customer service windows, as our office continues to modernize our leasing, notary, and document services statewide, having a facility that aligns with modernization is essential. Ultimately, this agreement represents more than an office space. It represents efficiency, accessibility, and support for businesses and community. By anchoring our services with Civic Plaza, we are strengthening infrastructure that helps new and existing businesses navigating state requirements without barriers. This location positions us to deliver faster services, expand outreach, and provide the, the kind of hands-on guidance that small businesses in Southern Nevada consistently ask for. This partnership reinforces a shared commitment between the state and the city of Las Vegas, one of the most business-friendly cities in the country. We appreciate your consideration and look forward to the continued collaboration as we try to make this possible.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Are there any questions or comments from members of the city council? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Babsky, I just wanted to say you're doing a great job, so you should be really proud of you and your team. And then I wanted to remind the councilwoman that Ward 1 residents do eat teriyaki, and we also vote. So I'm grateful for you here in Civic Plaza.
Thank you. Ms. Bruni.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. You offer public notary services at the Secretary of State's office, or you will be?
We're the licensing of notaries.
Okay, so you don't offer notary services the way that we do here?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Tara.
Thank you. Ms. Babsky, congratulations on your hard work of you and your team. I'm curious, just because I'm new, tell me what the, the special event acts to the plaza. Just tell me a little bit about what our leases include there.
Sure. Thank you through you, Mayor. I thank you, Councilwoman, for your question. So the leases that we have with the Chamber of Commerce and with the Workforce Connections, there is a few event spaces in Civic Plaza that includes the plaza itself. Then there is the rooftop on the Building A where the beautiful grass is. Essentially, you can hold events there. And then, of course, there is the, the Van Cafe, that the, it's the portion where there, you could host events and have catering and things of that nature. So those spaces are all included, obviously, on a reservation type of, you know, basis, they have to be scheduled through that, through our special events team that's led by Jasmine Freeman. And so all of that is outlined in the lease, that there is a, I believe, between two and four events per space per year, and I can confirm exactly the number, that could be scheduled through our special events team.
Not necessary. I just was in general interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Before then, it's great to see you, Deputy Secretary Rodriguez. I know that it's been a priority of our Secretary of State Aguilar to ensure that things are streamlined for small businesses, and he doesn't want to see them going through a ping-pong experience of being bounced around between. And I think that selecting the city of Vegas to now house and your services, I think, is achieving and making some headway on, on this undertaking that I know is so important to him. So please tell him we congratulate him, and we are appreciative of his vision and making this a reality. It's so, so cool to hear you'll be there, Vegas Chambers there, Workforce Connections there, so we are going to be extremely business-friendly. So with that, I move to approve Agenda Item 28.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 29, Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Jesse Slezer to a Ward 4 Seat of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Ward 4 is entitled to appoint two representatives to the board. Earl Stitz occupied one of the Ward 4 seats and had to resign. Ms. Slezer, Mr. Slezer is eligible and wishes to serve. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Polensky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jesse is president of Mountain Ridge Little League out in the Northwest. About 10 years ago, they made a big run to the Little League World Series. Really proud to have him. He's agreed to serve on our Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. I can't think of no better person who spends seven days a week at our parks to serve in this position with pride. I move to approve Item Number 29.
Thank you so much. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Agenda Item 30, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Kenneth Kraft to the Ward 6 Seats of the Traffic and Parking Commission and the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. Mr. Ronald Calderon occupied the Ward 6 resident seat on the Traffic and Parking Commission. His term has expired. Mr. Calderon was originally appointed to the Ward 6 seat on the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Commission Board on 2021. A recommendation can be made at any time as the member serves until replaced, but it is usually done in conjunction with the replacement of a ward-specific seat on the Traffic and Parking Commission. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Bruni?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Kraft was very involved with his North Las Vegas community, and we stole him away. He's now a resident of Ward 6. And so I'm happily willing to nominate him or to approve the nomination to have him serve on the Traffic and Planning, sorry, Traffic and Parking Commission and the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Committee.
Thank you so much. Please vote. Motion carries. Agenda Item, Agenda Item 31, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Councilman Knutson, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2025-36, An Ordinance to Amend Various Sections of LVMC Chapter 6.75 Relating to Short-Term Residential Rentals to Conform the Definition of the Term to the Definition of That Term as Found in LVMC Title 19, Update and Clarify Requirements Relating to Owner Occupancy and Liability Insurance, and Provide For Other Related Matters. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries. Agenda Item 32, Councilwoman, Councilman Knutson, would you like to have this bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2025-37, An Ordinance to amend LVMC Title 7 by Adding a New Chapter Therein Designated as Chapter 7.43 to Require Certain Owners and Operators of Commercial Establishments engaged in the Business of Handling Pets to Complete a Training Course on Handling Pets and to Provide For Other Related Matters. Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries. Agenda Item 33, Council, Councilman Knutson, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2025-38, An Ordinance to Adopt That Certain Document Entitled Development Agreement for Desert Pines, Including the Incorporated Desert Pines Development Standards and Architectural Design Guidelines and Other Incorporated Elements, and to Provide For Other Related Matters. Move to approve. Move to approve.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 34, Councilman Knutson, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number 2025-40, An Ordinance Adopting an Extension of an Ad Valorem Property Tax Rate in the City of Las Vegas for the Purpose of Employing Police Officers with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department as Required by the Senate Bill 451 of the 83rd, 2025 Session of the Nevada Legislature and Providing for Other Related Matters. Mayor, with your indulgence, Jeff Dorcak, City Attorney, I need one minute. I'd like to just address some points that we've been questioned on in our office for the audience in person, online, and on TV, if possible.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, ma'am. As I mentioned with the bill title, this bill will adopt an extension of an already-existing property tax rate that is effective for all City of Las Vegas residents for the purpose of employing Metro Police officers as mandated by the legislature this past session. This bill is an extension of the existing tax that was approved originally by voters in a general election vote in 1996, which imposed a 20 cent per $100 valuation property tax rate on all the homes in our jurisdiction and Clark County that are covered by the Metropolitan Police Department. In 1997, the state legislature set that property tax to end in 2027. As a result, this past session, the legislature went in and extended it for 30 years through 2057 with the passage of, as mentioned, Senate Bill 451 for the city and the county. As part of that bill, the state legislature required both the Clark County Commission and this city council to approve a corresponding ordinance to take care of the extension. Finally, of note, on the property tax money itself, because of the imposed property tax caps and property tax abatements that came into effect early to mid 2000s, even if the legislature had not extended this property tax, because it came into effect in the late 90s, the property tax would have been backfilled by abated property tax. In other words, no matter what, the property tax rate, the property tax bill of people in the county and the city affected by this property tax would stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, move to approve.
Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 35, Bill 2025-39 will be heard at a later meeting. Agenda Item 36, Item 36 is on the Consent Agenda is Considered to be Routine and is Recommended for Approval by the Department of Community Development. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Please vote. Post. Item numbers 37 through 42 appear on the One Motion, One Vote Agenda and may be considered in One Motion, One Vote as they are routine items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions of all standard conditions for the applications recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Item 37, 25-0350-SUP1, applicant Zira India Catering, Inc., owner Mercado 888 LLC on a land use entitlement project request for a proposed 1,510 square foot alcohol on-premises full use at 1118 South Rainbow Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. Item Number 38, 25-0356-GPA1, applicant A4 Builders LLC, owner Andrew Grasso IV on a land use entitlement project request from PF Public Facility to M Medium Density Residential on 0.16 acres at the southeast corner of Wilson Avenue and 10th Street, Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. Agenda Item 39, 25-0374-MOD1, applicant/owner The Howard Use Company LLC on a land use entitlement project request for the proposed modification of the Summerlin West Village 22 Plan to amend the special land use designation of parcel B1 from VC-MF3 Village Commercial High Density Multifamily to VC Village Commercial and Parcel LL from VC-MF3 Village Commercial High Density Multifamily to SFSD Single Family Special Lot Development on 47.90 acres at the northeast corner of Sunset Run Drive in Surrey-Ben Drive, Ward 2, Ms. Kelly. Agenda Item 40, 25-0384-VAC1, applicant Taylor Morrison Homes of Nevada LLC, owner Holy Trinity Orthodox Tiwahado Church et al. on a land use entitlement project request for a petition to vacate the public drainage easement generally bounded by Oki Boulevard, Mohawk Street, El Parque Avenue, and Edmund Street, Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. Agenda Item 41, 25-0397-RQR1, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor LLC, owner Safety Institute Buildings LLC on a land use entitlement and project request for a required review of an approved SUP-4521 for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot premise sign on 820 South Valley View Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. Item 42, 25-0416-GPA1, applicant/owner City of Las Vegas on a request to amend the City of Las Vegas Master Plan of Streets and Highways map, Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Items 37 through 40 and 42. Staff recommends approval of all items. These are public hearings that I now declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on Items 37 through 42? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearings. Mayor Pro Tem, may I have a motion for the One Motion, One Vote items?
Madam Mayor, move to approve Items 37 through 42.
Please vote. Post. Agenda Item 43, Items 43A was not part of the appeal and Items 43B was withdrawn. Item Number 44, 25-0304-VAR1, Appeal Item Variance, applicant/owner, and may I ask you to please come forward if you are here? For possible action on an appeal of the denial by the Planning Commission of a land use entitlement project request for a proposed residential accessory structure, a gym, that does not conform to Title 19.06 Development Standards for Steadbacks on 0.48 acres at 1540 South Tenaya Way, RE Residential Estate Zone, Ward 1, Mr. Knutson. The Planning Commission and the staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. I see that the applicants are here. Would you please state your name and perhaps spell your name for the record, and then tell us about your project?
Of course. Yeah, my name is Yongqing Yuan. My first name is spelled as Y-O-N-G-Q-I-N-G. My last name is spelled as Y-U-A-N. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here.
My name is Shundan Xiao, S-H-U-N-D-A-N, and my last name is XIAO. Thanks for the opportunity.
Great, yeah. So we'd like to start about, we actually moved from California to Vegas because we're able to work remotely, and also we have a passion of poker. So that's why we moved here. And the reason we have a gym, because as you can imagine, that poker requires long hours of sitting, and it's important to keep our health, physical health. And having a gym at home is both very safe, reliable, and also lower maintenance from our perspective. And the reason, I think, we really appreciate the discussion last time, I think, with the council about, I think, the concern with the safety was already addressed. The major feedback we got was the location of the gym, because there's some feedback from the board member that the backyard is also fairly large. Why can't we just build it in a place or in a location where we don't have to apply for the variance? So that's why we actually had a drawing here, if you would like to take a look. But basically, the main point we're trying to address here is that are there other locations where the gym is more suitable? And the answer is actually no, if you can actually see the design of our backyard. Oh, yeah, sure. Oh. Yes. So as you can see, our backyard is actually on a very steep slope, right? So you can kind of see here. Don't know if it's very clear. So it's actually not safe to build the gym in a very steep slope because you have heavy equipment, right? And also, if you can see, the only flat portion of our backyard is actually in the back, right? And also, we have a swimming pool in the middle, right? And there's a pool equipment here, which makes this location also not suitable. So that actually leaves us with only one option, which is the flat region in the left-back portion of the backyard. And in order for us to keep a safe distance from some of the steps in the original swimming pool, that's why we're only able to construct our gym in this lower portion of the backyard. And that's the reason that we're applying for the variance. In addition, we actually spoke to our neighbors before the construction idea, actually for our neighbors, even though some of the neighbors are only touching the corner. Like, they all feel like this is a good idea, and they actually signed a consent letter for us. And also, a couple days ago, another neighbor from like two blocks away came to us and said they actually support our petition for this gym location. I'm going to quickly stop here and see if you have any questions.
I think what we're going to do is have a staff report, and then we'll ask members of the council if they have any questions. So may we have a staff report at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. Mayor, this is an appeal, as you noted, of the Planning Commission's denial of this application. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented. The applicant has presented a self-composed hardship by constructing a residential accessory structure that fails to comply with Title 19 setback requirements, and therefore, staff is recommending denial of the requested variance and therefore denial of the appeal.
Is there anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And are there any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Ms. Kelly?
Thank you. Will you just review the process for me, Seth, on how the appeals work, please? Just in terms of, I wasn't here when they first approached.
Sure. Yeah, so Seth Floyd, for the record, so this initially came to Planning Commission on a variance request to allow some relief from the setback requirement because they are too close to the property line. The Planning Commission moved for and ultimately denied that request for a variance. Because it was final action at Planning Commission, the applicant had the option to appeal that to you, the city council, to re-review that and make a new determination.
Okay, thank you. And then when you had said in your report that there was no evidence of, I'm sorry, I have it right, yeah, hardship. Thank you. I have it right in front of me, in fact. The residents right here are talking about the slope of the property. Was that not presented? I just want, trying to figure out the relevance to this.
So Seth Floyd, for the record, I believe they did make that argument or something similar to that argument at Planning Commission. So we get our variance language from state law. It's very narrow, the circumstances under which a variance is appropriate. And typically, that would be if the lot is irregularly shaped such that you couldn't put a structure because of the shape. The slope here is, in my view, not significant enough that an alternative location couldn't be found, so that's how we reached that conclusion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Does anybody else have any questions? Seth, I'd like to know, can anybody see this edition from the street?
So Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record, in one of the photos, if Jeff can go back to the photos that we're scrolling, there is a photo from the front, the other one, Jeff, the next one, that's, yep, you can see it in the back from there, although it is in the very back. But that picture was taken from Tenaya.
I see. All right. Did you, okay, go ahead, Ms. Rooney.
Hi, I have a question. Are the neighbors next to you and behind you, are they in support of?
Yeah, four neighbors. We also have another support letter from another neighbor that's not, oh.
Yeah, all neighbors that are touching the boundary.
Yeah, all neighbors plus this neighbor who actually came to us the other day to send the support, yeah.
Any other questions? In that case, is there a motion, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. We haven't met. I typically rely on my Planning Commissioner to make the decisions around all of my residential areas. He spends quite a bit of time reaching out to folks. He did reach out and asked for some level of compromise, and there wasn't any agreement to compromise. He also asked for compromise at the Planning Commission meeting, and there wasn't any agreement to compromise. And I'm not sure if they've already started construction. I believe you've already started construction without the appropriate variance.
So Seth Floyd, for the record, I believe it is still in the condition that you saw in the photo, so some of the construction has started, yes.
Yeah, so if you would have followed the proper process, the Planning Commissioner would have been willing to work with you, but you weren't willing to compromise in any way. And so I tend to follow my Planning Commissioner's recommendation, which would be to deny the appeal.
Can I ask one more question before we vote? Can they, if in fact there is a compromise possible, can they come back and repetition the city council?
So Seth Floyd, for the record, Mayor, if they are denied, they would have a one-year cooling-off period essentially where they could not bring the same application. If it were obeyed and they were willing to look at it, they could certainly explore some other options. And then if that was your pleasure, they could bring that back with a revised design.
Can I ask a question? So because we weren't here for the Planning Commission meeting the first time, what kind of compromises were proposed during that meeting?
Mr. Floyd?
I would have to review. I don't remember exactly what the discussion was on the compromise, because there were no plans that were presented, and it was all verbal discussions, so I'm not exactly sure.
It was a verbal discussion, and the Planning Commissioner at the meeting asked if you would like to think about moving it to a different location. I understand the grade variance or the slope within your backyard is a concern, but he also asked about potentially moving the pool equipment. And all of this was to align with what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. The rest of the neighborhood doesn't have buildings right next to somebody else's backyard. So he was trying to figure out if there was a way to compromise and meet in the middle. But at that meeting, there was no compromise requested or offered. And in the days since that last meeting, no one's reached out to our office to offer a compromise either. So I would stick with my motion, which would be to deny.
Let me ask one other question. If they decided to withdraw this item at this time, can they start negotiating with the city to see if we can come up with a compromise?
So Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record, I would defer to Jeff on this, but I believe if they withdraw, the item before you is an appeal. So if they withdrew the appeal, what would be left is the denial from Planning Commission. So I'm not sure that would quite get you where I think you're trying to go there. I think if you were looking for them to compromise, the abeyance is probably the better way to go, because that buys some time to have that discussion, because the denial has already happened at Planning Commission.
If they chose to do that, would be able to remand it back to the Planning Commission?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that one.
Describe that again, MPT, please.
If they wanted to obey and think about doing a compromise, would I be able to remand it back to the Planning Commission?
My instinct is yes, and I will go with that, because we have done a remand before on various items, and obviously not the exact same as here, but we'd have to word it just right with your motion, which I don't think would be that difficult, but remand to the Planning Commission so long as a substantive change is made with the remand to the Planning Commission so long as a substantive change is made with the proposal, right? We don't want them just taking the same thing back to Planning Commission, something like that.
That would be the compromise that I would offer, is my planning commissioner is really good and spends quite a bit of time with people, and really puts a lot of thought and energy into helping people get to that variance approval. If you're willing to take time and go back through that process and compromise where it's appropriate, then I'm happy to remand it back to the Planning Commission if the city attorney agrees.
And when you talk about compromises to replan where the structure is?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe we can also share some context here. Last time, the contractor company actually represented us in the meeting. And when we first moved here, we were actually not aware that we need to apply for this process, because we kind of trusted the contractor to take care of it. But you can see, the project was paused, because one day, I kind of stumbled upon a neighbor who is actually working for the city, and he told us, "Oh, I saw you guys are working for this structure here. It looks pretty nice." And we started talking, and he's like, "Oh, you actually have to go through this process to apply for the approval." So we were actually kept in the dark for a long time. And that's why we kind of asked our contractor to represent us in this, and we always got the promise that, you know, the variance or like the structure approval should be okay. So I think we really get some of the eyes on like how to proceed from here, because if we had known that we should have started the process at the beginning, like if we were not kept in the dark, we would have followed this from the start. But now we're also kind of in this difficult spot, now that we have a structure that's unfinished. And we actually specifically asked them to pause this ourselves, and to basically obey like this structure, this process.
You should probably find a different contractor that does understand the process, and hopefully, they're licensed and bonded and doing the work as they are legally required to do. My challenge is, for the rest of my colleagues, is I have a lot of unpermitted work in my ward, and so I struggle with, because there's several items coming before the next Planning Commission where one neighbor's fighting with another neighbor because they did go through the right process, and the other neighbor did not go through the right process. And it just becomes a back and forth. So if I bend on one issue, then I have to justify every other issue that comes before me and my planning commissioner. So the option would be, is if you want it, I'm happy to remand it back to the Planning Commission, but he is going to ask you to compromise. And my suggestion would be is to find a different contractor that's legally bonded and licensed and understands the rules, if you want that.
Yeah, the contractor is actually legally licensed, so that's why we are.
I would check on that.
Yeah, we checked, we actually checked on the website.
Well, he didn't, he did not do a good job of representing you at the Planning Commission.
We wonder if there's like legal action we can take against him?
That's not for me to answer. The question for you is, is I can deny the appeal now, or would you like for me to remand it back to the Planning Commission and start working with the planning commissioner?
Yeah, I think that would be the best option for us, right?
Okay, then I'm gonna ask for help from the city attorney on how I do that.
MPT's motion is gonna be to remand for redesign and a reconsideration by the Planning Commission. Do the community development department folks want to have an outside end date for them to pull all this off, so we don't have it kind of just out there forever?
So the next probably available Planning Commission for us would be the January, so if we want to remand that to the January Planning Commission meeting, that gives them time to submit revised plans and for us to review those. And we would need that submitted by, I'm looking at Peter, this Thursday? We have a closing this Thursday, so if they can get a revision in by this Thursday, that we put them on January.
Do the next one, then.
So February would be the next one with a closing in December.
So what I would suggest, if you're willing to do that, is I'm happy to work with you if you want to reach out to my office and ask for guidance on how to walk through the process. I am gonna connect you with the Planning Commissioner, again, his name is Commissioner Jeff Rogan. Just to say what his thoughts and expectations would look like, he is pretty willing to compromise, and so it's just kind of going back and forth with him on how he feels comfortable making an approval of a variance. And then if we give you time, which would be the February Planning Commission meeting, it gives you time to work it out with your contractor, whoever you choose to work with, but make sure they understand what the process for the city looks like, and understands, and informs you appropriately. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, would you withdraw your original motion before you make the next one?
I will withdraw the motion to deny the appeal, and make a new motion to remand this to the Planning Commission for the February? Sorry, Mr. Floyd, I forgot.
February 10th.
Okay, so I'm gonna rescind the first motion. The second motion will be to remand this item back to the Planning Commission with substantial changes to the plans already submitted for the February 10th Planning Commission.
Okay. Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries.
I do wish you the best of luck. I love working out in gyms, so I hope we can come to a compromise and you can get your gym, and reach out if we can help in any way.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Agenda item number 45. Twenty-five dash zero-three-six-one dash VAC one. Appeal item vacation. Applicant Stone Land Holdings LLC. Owner Clark County Vacant Series of a cab, of the Cab Properties LLC. For possible action on an appeal of the approval by the Planning Commission on a land use entitlement project request for a petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements generally bounded by Alexander Road, El Capitan Way, and Giuliano Road. R dash one, single-family residential zone, Ward four, Ms. Alan Polensky. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. Does the applicant wish to come forward?
Good morning, Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here today on behalf of the developer of the project and the original applicant for the vacation. Our office did not file this appeal, so perhaps if the person who appealed it is here, they could make a presentation, and then I could fill in, or I'm happy to talk about the vacation, but we didn't appeal this. So I just want to make that clear.
Is there anybody here that wishes to address this item? Is there a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, for the record. Staff has no objection to the vacation of the U.S. government patent easements, and therefore recommends approval of the petition to vacate with the original conditions, and so we do not support the appeal. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant, are there any questions or comments from the council? Is there a motion, Councilwoman Polensky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without representation from the resident who filed the appeal, I feel like there's no other choice other than to deny the appeal and move forward the project. Thank you.
So denial of, denial of the appeal is?
Approval of the vacation. Correct. Thank you.
Okay, so if we vote, if the council members vote yes, that's the appropriate vote. All right, shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Item number forty-six. Forty-six twenty-four dash zero-five-zero-eight. Tabled item re-notification on the following land use entitlement project request. See, on zero-point-three-two acres generally located west of Harvey Mumford Street, approximately seven-hundred-and-twenty-five feet south of Washington Avenue. Forty-six A, twenty-four dash zero-five-zero-four dash VAR one. Tabled items re-notification to allow a sixty-foot lot width where one-hundred feet is the minimum required. Forty-six B, twenty-four dash zero-five-zero-eight dash GON one. Tabled item re-notification from RE Residential, Residence Estates to C two, general commercial. The applicant is Champion Resource Group LLC, and the owner is DFA LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval on the entire land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward five, Ms. Summers Armstrong, in our public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you like to tell us about, first, would you give your name, and then will you tell us about your project?
Sure. Lloyd Benson. My address is seven-one-four-zero, Doe Avenue, eight-nine-one-one-seven. This, the property that you're speaking of, Mayor, let me just put this map, it gives you a better idea of what we're talking about. So this land on West Bonanza, over the years, that Ahern Rentals has been in business, has purchased properties over the many years, and some of it has been rezoned to accommodate the business's growth, and some of it that's been recently acquired hasn't been rezoned. So what we're trying to do here is just get all the properties conformed into one zoning, just to kind of clean up the zoning in the area. Another part of that puzzle is that I'm not that young anymore. We're all getting older, including Don Ahern, and he sold his company in '22 to United Rentals, was an asset sale. So he owns the land still, leasing part of it to United Rentals, so they can continue with their business model. Nonetheless, it's a lease, so there's a couple of years left on the lease. There's gonna come a point in time, because of the age of both of us, that something's gonna have to happen with that land, whether it's developed into something or it's sold. And I think both of those things are easier to do if the land is zoned, if the entire block of land that he's purchased over the years is zoned with the same zoning, okay? So, does this show up on the, on your screen? Oh, yeah, there it is, right there. Okay. So I know that some of the properties that have been denied by the Planning Commission, or that have recommended denial by the Planning Commission, are properties that don't meet the criteria to be rezoned commercial. And that's because the frontage doesn't meet the minimum requirement of a hundred feet. Do I need to flip that? Okay. All right. Okay. So, this is, this is the property we're speaking of. Along here, this is Washington. This is Harvey Mumford Street. And this, along here, is Bonanza. And then this street here is Clark Way. So in totality, this acreage right here represents about fifty acres, broken up into several different zones, several parcels are zoned differently. The one on Harvey Mumford Street, this little piece right here, I think the frontage is like sixty or eighty feet. For us to merge it, so the purpose of rezoning it right is to merge it into one parcel. And for us to, before we can do that, we have to make sure that all the parcels are zoned the same before it can be merged. This is currently RE, and so for us to get to that point where we merge the properties, we have to get it zoned C two. So that's part of, that's part of the issue. The other issue is, all these properties that are circled with the different zonings are owned by DFA, Don Ahern. The ones that aren't circled are owned by five individuals, which would be this one right here and this one. Those are the only two properties, other than one out here on Bonanza, that, that Don doesn't own, that DFA doesn't own. So that's kind of my story.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For sharing your story with us. Staff, could, we have a report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. Mayor, this item was tabled at the August 6, 2025 city council meeting, and has been re-notified to be heard today, as you mentioned at the beginning. Staff finds the proposed rezoning from RE to C two is not appropriate and not consistent with the adjacent single-family dwellings bordering the site, as the rezoning would allow intense commercial uses commonly located along commercial corridors and other commercial areas to encroach into an existing residential neighborhood and directly adjacent to a single-family residence, and therefore, staff is recommending denial of the land use entitlements. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Ms. Summers Armstrong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much, Mr. Benson, for being here. We've had a couple of, several conversations about this, and I've expressed my concerns to you all about what happens on Harvey Mumford. Currently, we have three families living on that street. They have been there for years, and although you have individual agreements with them about some future use of their land, they still live there. And our consideration for what you're asking for on, in this, on this item, is, would be considered spot zoning, in my opinion, because the street is currently zoned RE, and you want to change it in order to do a combining. But you can't combine because you don't own two of the properties. And as I've expressed to you all before, part of the job that I hold is to have consideration for the people who are already existing and living in these communities. And at this point, today, I just cannot believe, I cannot agree with the rezoning there on these. Once you have control of those two properties, I think that's a different conversation. But to put commercial use where we already have two residences on that side of the street, and then one across the street, I think it would be inappropriate at this time.
So I have statements from both these individuals. Do you mind if I read them?
It doesn't matter. I mean, yes, you can.
Yes, please read them.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Macon Jackson, he lives right here. This is his property right here. He stays, "Dear City Council, I've been asked to give a statement about the zoning applications for the properties next to my home. Honestly, I know this area is going to become commercial at some point, probably sooner rather than later. So this is just part of how things are developing. I've known Don Ahern and Lloyd Benson for many years and consider them not just neighbors, but friends. They've always been straightforward, respectful, and fair, and I trust they'll handle this process the right way when it comes to me and my property. From my perspective, I don't have any concerns about the rezoning at all. In fact, I think it could end up being really beneficial down the line. I'm confident that whatever happens will be managed responsibly, and I feel good about the changes coming to the area. Overall, I'm supportive of the process, and I'm looking forward to seeing how things develop. Sincerely, Macon Jackson." James Gray has this property right here. "Dear City Council, Mr. Benson asked me to write a letter expressing my feelings about the rezoning for the property around my home. I have known Don Ahern a very long time, and I have done business with him over the years. We have developed a friendship. He is a good friend, and he is always willing to help out. I support him with this because he has always supported me. I have no problem with the commercial zoning." James Gray.
Can I ask you a question? You're not planning on evicting these people that live there at this time?
No, no, Madam. We actually have a handshake agreement with both of them. James is looking at other properties. If he found a property that would be acceptable, he would move tomorrow, and we would buy his property, and we're working with him to that end. Macon Jackson is the same situation. We've talked about buying Macon's property. He's agreed to sell it to us, and he too, he's not ready to move, to be honest with you. But his, his family built that house in the sixties, I think he said sixty-three, and he knew eventually that the property would eventually be tore down to make way for other development. And he says, "We're to that point." He says, "So if, if you don't need my property right now, I'll just live here. But if you do need it for some development, I would be happy to sell it to you today." And Macon would be here today, but he's working, and James Gray would be here today too, but he's, his health doesn't allow him to be here. So that's why I brought the statements with me.
Is there any other members of the council that wish to speak at this time? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Just a quick question. Is there future plans for that area? Like, have you thought about what the development would look like outside of the zoning?
Yes. So Don hasn't given me the freedom to speak to those things, but yes, we do have two or three ideas for development, and it would be consistent with that whole area, believe me. And the other, the other idea that, that we've talked about is just selling the property to a developer that would promote some of those ideas that he has for development. But there are some, there are some thoughts about that. I'm not privy to talk about it in public, but I would probably be happy to sit down with the council, one-on-one, or, or as a group, with Don Ahern there, and he can tell you what those plans are.
Is there anybody else wishing to comment? Yes, Ms. Diaz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Benson, can you, I guess, educate? Some of us are kind of like, we know you're requesting the zone change for a future project. I know you have significant land holdings on this entire. I know you have significant land holdings on this entire, in this entire space. Can you make it clear, I guess, to us what you all currently own and what you don't? Just so that we can kind of keep that.
This, this map doesn't show the entirety of the, the property that we own over there, but it's the bulk of it. So, Washington, Harvey Mumford, Bonanza, and Clark Way. So Clark Way is the street just before Tonopah going west, okay? There's property that we own going west on, on, beyond Clark, or I would say between Clark Way and, and Tonopah. But speaking to this section, this is about 50 acres. We do not own the two, the two properties I just mentioned, Macon Jackson's property, which is this one, and James Gray property, which is this one. And across the, and that's the only two. Across the street, we own all the property between Bonanza and the 95, from MLK down to about Tonopah, which would be about right here somewhere. Okay? So that's kind of the land holdings in that area. Well, sorry. On the other side of Harvey Mumford Way, which fronts MLK, we own three, these three lots right here that are, that are circled. And two of those, and those are some of the lots that are on the agenda to be rezoned, to C2. So this, this piece right here is the one that, the ones across the street are zoned, I think, like manufacturing. And, but, but this, the bulk of the property, which is this 50 acres here, is the one, is the, is the properties that we're trying to uniformly get zoned C2, so that everything is. And then at that point, after they're zoned C2, we'd like to merge all the partial, all the parcels. This piece right here, this yellow piece, that's R3, that used to be an apartment complex called Desert Gardens, and it was a mess. In fact, do you mind if I read a letter from President, from President, from Sheriff McMahill?
Yes, please.
Regarding that? Okay. This R3 property represents about 25% of that 50 acres. It's right in the middle. And I started purchasing that about seven years ago. It's been a, it's been a long journey. When I went over there to, to confront the, the owner to see if we could purchase it, because it became infested with crime. It was horrible. And so I went over to see if we could purchase it, and I found out that in 2005, these 148 units had been condominiumized. So now I'm dealing with not one owner of the apartment complex, I'm dealing with 148 different landowners. So this is the letter, and I partnered with the Metropolitan Police Department to help me with this, because it was so crime-ridden. This was dated May 23rd, 2025. Dear Mr. Benson, on behalf of the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to you, Don Ahern, and Ahern Rentals for your unwavering commitment and long-term efforts toward the redevelopment and beautification of the historic West Side neighborhood, specifically the acquisition of the Desert Gardens condominiums at 1720 West Bonanza. This project, almost a decade in the making, represents more than just a real estate transaction. It marks the turning of a new page for a property that for years had been a focal point of criminal activity and concern for both LVMPD, Bolden Area Command specifically, and the surrounding community. The Desert Gardens condominium complex was plagued by some of the most dangerous criminal elements we confront as a department with a high frequency of emergency calls. Domestic violence was the top call for service at the complex. Officers responded to over 500 calls from 2018 until the apartment complex was demolished in 2022. Additionally, the complex saw 187 violent offenses, including assaults, robberies, sexual assaults, and homicides since 2018. Your tenacity and investment in this property, in this project reflect a clear dedication to the betterment of the historic West Side neighborhood and the city of Las Vegas. Transforming a site long associated with crime and instability into a place of renewed opportunity requires tremendous effort and vision. At LVMPD, we truly appreciate partners like Ahern Rentals who step up, commit resources, and dedicate themselves to the challenging work of making lasting community change. Your actions are contributing to a safe, to safer neighborhoods and a more helpful future for residents who have long deserved better. Please accept this letter as a formal expression of our gratitude and support. We look forward to continued collaboration and to the positive impact this redevelopment will bring to the Las Vegas community. With sincere appreciation, Kevin McMahill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
Just a quick question to Mr. Floyd or, or Mr. Lowenstein, whoever wants to answer it. I, I know there's a couple of other items on the agenda, and I kind of hinted at this in the briefings, as I just got confused by the number of items. Do the other items, how do they, how do they align with this item or not? And I apologize for my confusion. I don't know how else to ask that question.
So Seth Floyd, for the record, well, they're technically all separate requests. I think what Mr. Benson is doing is sort of showing you the bigger picture of what all of those requests look like. So you have, you do have a few items on here. There's the rezoning, that's the subject of item 46, which is the little small parcel on Harvey Mumford. There is a rezoning request also for that R3. Well, it's a, it's a bunch of parcels, but for the R3. And then there's the, the, there's a couple of RE parcels. Sorry Lloyd, I'm maybe going a little too fast there. If you want to point out where those are, that'll be the easiest. So that's, that's 46. And then, if you want to show where your others, so you've got those three are also a rezoning request.
That's 47.
That's 47. And then 50, let me make sure I give you the right number, 53.
52.
Sorry, 52 is the large R3 parcel. 54 is, sorry, 54 is the northwest corner.
Oh, and 53 is?
Yeah, sorry, I may have my numbers off. I'm just trying to show you exactly where all of these would be. And then the last one is those three that Mr. Benson was just pointing to, along MLK. So, the way they all relate is if all of those were rezoned, this map would look a little bit different, because all of those would be C2, with the remainder as, which they do not own, is RE, and then there's a PR as well, and a C1 on the hard corner of MLK.
One, one last question to make it more confusing for everybody, for me. So I'm always looking about the potential of rezoning, potentially putting parcels together so that development becomes possible in Ward 1. With a combined C2 zoning in this area, what are the development possibilities?
So Seth Floyd, for the record, with, I mean, there are, there are a number of permitted uses within C2. Typically, you think of C2 as your most intense commercial district, less intense than manufacturing, but you would get your auto uses, there's, they have a trade school on their C2 use, contractor yards, and I'm trying, there's a longer live, but they would get everything that comes along with C2. So if you look at our permitted use table, anything that's in C2 would now be permitted in those areas.
Councilman? One of the reasons we landed on C2 is the, the bulk of, I would say over 50% of it is already C2. So that's why we decided on the C2 zoning.
Mac McKnight, 4310 Plumberry Ave. Also, part of the variances and stuff with, with this right here becoming a C2, the school, they've got a truck driving school here that has been there, and we can't, by code, can't go through an R3 location to get to the school, because that's the way they have access to that area. So we have to do a C2 to allow us to get even in there, which we didn't realize that was an issue until this whole process came about. So all of that action also affects this too.
Thank you. Ms. Alan Polinsky, did you care to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have known Don Ahern for over 25 years, and he has been a friend and a great part of the city of Las Vegas, from my opinion. And he has been talking to me for my three years on City Council, specifically about this project, with his excitement of collecting up all the Monopoly pieces to bring forward at some point a really big project, which I have verbally been supportive of him in the last three years. I had no idea until your remarks five minutes ago that you would object, which puts me in a strange position here. But I've also known Macon Jackson, I've been in that house, I'm kind of thinking, what would Harvey Mumford do? And I'm pretty sure that he would be in favor of some sort of big project. But I wanted to be clear to anybody who's listening that, that this collection of land could potentially be monumentous for us at the city of Las Vegas, and I just want to keep that on everybody's forefront and make sure everyone's mindful of that.
Ms. Summers Armstrong?
And respectful all at the same time.
Thank you to all of you for your questions and your input. I live across the street. The neighborhood directly to the north, my husband and I purchased land there in 1997, and we raised three sons in this house since 1999. I know Mr. Ahern too, I've seen the, the collection of the property, and I'm not opposed to it. But we live in a, in a, in a reality where a, to move out of this neighborhood, move into anything even similar, not even similar, the cost of a house right now is $485,000. Mr. Harvey Mumford's property, when, after he passed, and what he sold, what his family sold it for his wife, was less than 300. We have to be honest about allowing the people who live on that street the opportunity to relocate, and not be forced to relocate, because everything around them is changing, and they're the last ones standing. This is still zoned in RE Street. This is where people live. They can continue to do their business from everything behind what is on Harvey Mumford, where that dark black line is, and you see the stripes where the RE is over to Clark Way, they can continue to do their business. And they have every right to, to collect that property. But right now, we have a singular issue before us, and that is whether or not allowing spot zoning is appropriate at this moment. And, and my position is, still holds, is that we have residents who live on this street, and until they own that property, they can't combine anyway. And also, what is not being discussed is that we have code enforcement issues on these properties, which is part of the reason why we're here, because they started, if we want to jump ahead to the item that has to do with the, the trucking company, they've been running their trucking company on RE property for years with the, in proper zoning. And these are not novices. The ladies that were here before us, before, they don't know what they're doing. They're, they're trusting someone. This is not a novice company, and they, if they didn't know, they should have known that they needed to go through the proper process before they began running their business, running trucks on that land without proper zoning. So this is a multi-layered situation, and I think it requires a multi-layered and thoughtful solution.
Before you make a motion, Ms. Bruni?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted some clarification. Are, is one of the items that we're visiting today, rezoning of the northwest parcel, the, I think, is that the orchard? Are those the orchards?
Yes, this is, this is the orchard right here. This is the green portion. No.
That's not.
It does not include that. And the reason being, as, as I understand it, an orchard can't be zoned C2.
That's what I was wondering, what was going to happen if you were coming in asking for a C2? So thank you for clarifying.
So we have that kind of in our back pocket, if, when the, when the redevelopment happens of this parcel, then we'll be back to rezone that, and unfortunately, we'll have to bulldoze the trees. So. That's for, can I, can I say?
You may.
Say something? So, Councilwoman mentioned that I'm running a trucking school on R3 property, which is not true. This area, the trucking school is in this area that I'm outlining with my finger, right up here. So this red part, it's all C2. The trucking school has been there for about three years, and it's been operating for three years on C2 property, not on R3 property. The, the one, the one caveat to that is that we used to access this property back here through the front gate, which would be right here. Once United Rentals leased this property, there was a fence that went right down here, and so that forced us to, to ingress and egress the trucks through this R3 property, this driveway right here. So that's another reason that I need to rezone this R3 property to C2, so I'm not driving my, my school trucks on the R3 property. Now, the school is very important. In the last two years, we've probably, we've probably had 800 commercial driver licenses that we've issued through the school, students that we've trained. I've partnered with John Ponder, you might know him, he runs Hope for Prisoners. We've actually put a school out at Southern Desert where we train, we've, we've paved almost three acres of property out there on the Southern Desert Correctional Facility, where we use our trucks to train these pre-released prisoners. The beauty about that is these pre-released, pre-released prisoners that have three or four months before they're released, when they get out, they actually have a CD, a commercial driver's license, and a job waiting for them. So this has been a game changer for, for some of the individuals getting out of prison. And they come back to this, so I'm also a third-party tester for the Department of Motor Vehicles. So not only do I train them, but I have certified testers that work for me that test them. So they come from the desert, from the, from prison, and they come over here, they're, they're brought over here by officers, where they're tested to get their commercial driver's license, and they're transported over to the Department of Motor Vehicles, where they get their picture taken and get their license. So they actually have their license before they get out of prison. So this is an important component to that whole process.
Is there any other council member wishing to speak before I entertain a motion? Yes?
Oh, this is a really difficult situation to put us in, because I, I am equally understanding both points of views, and it seems like we need to split a baby, and like, I don't want to split a baby. So understand, my colleague, she's obviously in the neighborhood, she's elected to represent her neighbors and her residents in the ward, and I know that that, that's a very important role that we have, right, sitting council members? And then we have you all that we know that everything that you've done for the city has been above board, and I know that you're trying to land us some future economic development opportunities, but we don't have that to substantiate, like, justifying the zoning, right? So I'm kind of in this weird middle, where I'm like, I don't know, like, we don't have the project plans quite yet to justify the C2, and then we have our colleague who's very invested in the neighborhood, so it really is, it's really, really a difficult call. I wanted to ask anyone from our city manager's team, let's say they land a couple of projects, they have the ability to move, they want to move forward expeditiously to, to be able to then transact, because obviously, they're the landholders, but if they land a couple of projects and bring some really good economic diversification to the city, how quickly and how nimbly could we, if, if not granted today, how quickly and nimbly could we look at that when something concrete is put in front of us? So I just kind of want to have that in the back of our head as we're all munching this or mulling this over.
Councilwoman Diaz, Mayor and Council, Mike Johnson, City Manager. I think the city prides ourselves on our expediency of processing development-related actions, as well as the permitting that goes with them. The long poll and intent is just usually the advance notice that's required by state law to get an item on the agenda. And so we have a certain advanced application to get on Planning Commission, a certain advanced period of time to get on City Council. But when a developer comes in and meets with our team and says we're interested in pursuing an entitlement of X, Y, or Z on our property, our process is, is pretty quick. As it relates to the development of the site itself, a lot of that really depends on- As it relates to the development of the site itself, a lot of that really depends on how urgent the developer is in wanting to prepare their architectural, engineering plans and go through the permit process. Some developers are much more expedient, and others, you know, there's a certain component related to financing or something else that stretches some of those things out. I would just say, you know, this is a perfect example of how sometimes we have some very challenging entitlement requests to address. When you look at the five items before you today, five of them have approval from the Planning Commission, but denial from city staff. And that's why these are the types of issues that are, really, at the end of the day, it's a policy question of what is appropriate for the location and the surroundings. And that's why I think Councilwoman Summers Armstrong has a tough situation here, because there's so many things that are in play. And I want to just reiterate, you know, staff's flexibility to recommend denial or approval lies with the code. And so they could love the project, but if it does not comply with the code, they have to recommend denial. The flexibility to consider things outside the code only falls upon the Planning Commission and the City Council. So hopefully that helps you just kind of get a picture of that.
And Councilwoman Seth Floyd, I'll just, Mike's exactly right about all of that. I would just add one nuance here, that if you denied 46, for example, which is the rezoning request, there is a one-year cooling-off period before they can come back with the same request. So that could potentially affect timing if they were to assemble these properties within that time and attempt to move forward. There would also likely be, given the number of parcels and the size of these parcels, a mapping action that would have to happen along with any future development as well.
I'm just going to chime in, because I was feeling the same way that Councilwoman Diaz was, just curious about, on your timing, like, is there the potential to bring these things back with the idea of what you think development could look like? Even though you can't say it publicly, like privately, you're able to say that this is what rezoning means, and this is what the development would look like? Because the picture is a lot easier to support than the rezoning, even though the rezoning is needed for the picture.
Sure.
It's a, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And I kind of get that. But it's helpful to kind of put them together.
Yeah, before I answer that question, I have one, Councilwoman mentioned spot zoning, and I have a question about that. If you go over to this side of the property, Clark Way, there's a property right here, you see part of it in red, that was rezoned commercial this year. And it's the only property on Clark Way that is commercial. Isn't that spot zoning?
Thank you. With great respect and admiration, I will call for Councilwoman Summers Armstrong to make her motion.
Before I make my motion, I want to just ask you all, do you want to pause this until you're ready to deal with the two homeowners? Because I think what was said by Seth Floyd, Mr. Floyd, was that if we deny it, you have to pause for a year. So if something happens with your development concept, you won't be able to bring it back for a year. And so I don't want to put you in that situation in case you're able to work things out with the two residences so that you do own those properties, and then you can move forward with packaging. But you also have a piece of land at Bonanza and Harvey Mumford that you don't own, that clinic, that is there. And so that also will not allow you to have a contiguous, a contiguous piece of land. And so you're still not going to, so you're still in a situation where you've got three pieces of land on one side, in that whole package, that you don't have under your control.
Well, I don't know what to say about all that, other than it seems to me, and my limited ability to understand all the processes in this meeting, that if I have the support of the two property owners, 100%, that should play something in this decision. And both Harvey Mumford and Macon Jackson has given me 100% of their support to rezone. I don't understand why you don't take that into consideration.
I did take it into consideration.
I will entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Mayor.
Ma'am, may I just ask them one more time? Because I'm inclined to move for denial. And if I do that, you're barred for a year. And I don't want to put you in that position, because I still, we've talked about this four or five times already. I have a concern. If I deny, if I move for a motion to deny, and it's approved, you're barred for a year on, just on this, on these two, on this Harvey Mumford Street.
So we're just talking about the Harvey Mumford properties? We're not talking about the R3 property?
Nope. We are on 46.
We're on 46. So we're just talking 46 here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right here. This one right here? So my two options are, one, denial, and what's my other option?
Mr. Floyd?
Yeah, so Seth Floyd, for the record, so I think what, if you did not want to move forward today and not get a denial or a vote either way, it would be a withdrawal without prejudice. That takes the application off of our agenda, and you could bring it back at any time in the future with a new application. It would be a new submittal.
Mr. Floyd, would that also apply to 47?
So if you were inclined to do the same thing on 47, yes. A withdrawal would mean that that comes off the agenda. They could bring it back at any time with a new submittal.
Withdrawal?
Withdrawal.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to move for a withdrawal of item 46, and without prejudice.
All right. Shall we vote on that motion? And this is what you are agreeing to?
As long as I understand that we're on the same agenda item. So we're talking about Agenda...
This right here.
Agenda item 46.
Item 46, which is the variance, right? And 47?
Not, we're not doing 47 yet. This is 46.
Okay, 46 is the variance.
The variance and the rezoning.
And the rezoning, yes.
So you're withdrawing?
I'm withdrawing item 46.
And you know that you can bring it back at any time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion that withdraws this agenda item, please vote. Motion carries. Agenda item 47. 24-0510-CON1, tabled item, re-notification, rezoning, applicant, Champion Resource Group LLC, owner, DFA LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request from RE Residential Estates to C2 General Commercial on 2.68 acres, generally located at the southwest corner of Washington Avenue and Harvey Mumford Street. Ms. Summers Armstrong, the Planning Commission recommends approval. The staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. The applicant is present. Would you like to tell us about this project?
Okay, so we're back to these three right here. And that's just part of the overall plan to rezone all these properties consistently. So, yeah.
Seth, may I have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Seth Floyd, for the record, Mayor, similar to item 43, staff finds the rezoning would be incompatible with the existing adjacent low-density residential zoning districts in the surrounding area, and may allow more intense uses commonly located along commercial corridors to further encroach into an existing residential neighborhood, and staff therefore recommends denial of the request.
Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Mayor, and Seth Floyd, for the record, I'm sorry, I said item 43.
Yeah, you didn't mean that.
I meant item 46. Sorry about that.
Thank you for the clarification. Members of the council? Seeing no one, is there a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong?
I would like to do the same thing, gentlemen, if we can just...
Withdraw?
Withdraw, without prejudice, and we can bring it, but you can bring it back once you've worked out these items, the properties.
Okay, so I'm agreeable to withdraw that item.
All right.
We'd like to request a withdrawal.
Ms. Summers Armstrong, are you saying that the parcels that are still in private hands need to be sold to Ahern before they can bring it back? I'm trying to get a handle on what we're doing here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not certain how, if the overall plan is to develop the entire 50 acres, how can they do that if they don't have control over all the property? And that's where they are right now. And we have people who live on at least two of the properties. So I think that that has to be resolved in some manner that is legally binding in order to, for them to move forward with the development agreement.
And you don't think that the letters of support for their project is sufficient?
Is a letter of support binding in any contractual manner?
Jeff Dorkak, City Attorney. Now, I would describe it as just a letter of support. And to the question earlier from the applicant, it is evidence that the council can take into consideration, but it's up to your discretion how you weigh it.
All right. If there are no more questions from the camp... Oh, yes, Ms. Polanski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess this is a general question. I don't know if staff or Mr. Benson would answer. We're speaking specifically to the three parcels circled, correct?
Yes.
Are they occupied at all?
No, there's vacant land.
And it's commercial on C1 on one side and C2 on the other side?
Yes.
And you own the land?
Yes.
I personally don't have any objection, but as I said before, I'm respectful of the councilwoman who represents the area. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong.
Same motion, withdraw without prejudice.
Please vote. Oh, here we are. Okay, the vote is five to two, so it passes. Agenda item 52, 25-0330, on the following land use entitlement project request on a portion of 29.09 acres on the southwest corner of Bonanza and Clark Way Drive. 52A, 25-0330-CON1, from R3 Medium Density Residential, RE Residential Estates, and C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General Commercial. Item 52B, 25-0330-SUP1, for proposed trade school use, commercial driver's license training. The applicant owner is DFA LLC. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5. Summers Armstrong, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. The applicant is present. Is there any more you would like to tell us about your project?
No, I kind of gave you an overview in the beginning. That was the, this larger piece right here is the one I think we're discussing now, right? That was the letter I read from Sheriff McMahill.
And then these three.
And these three right here. So we'd like to make this, and we'd like, so we already own these right here. This middle one is C1, it looks like, the ones on both sides, but there's one tenant in there that utilizes the whole area, and he's getting ready to move out. So we just like to be consistent in our zoning, and if we're going to rezone this R3 property to C2, we'd like to include these three properties on the front Bonanza.
We also need that zoning, so we have the ability to go through.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Just, because the rest of us are catching up, because we haven't had as much time. So this, Agenda item 52A and 52B is the entirety of the yellow, correct?
Yes.
Just so that I'm making an informed vote on that one?
It is.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the council? At this time, I'll entertain a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, Mr. Floyd, if you could just confirm, my map says that this would include both the R3 property and the two RE little legs on the bottom, and the C1.
Seth Floyd, for the record, yes, that is correct. And you'll also notice on your header, there are about 48 parcels. Those were the condo parcels as well that were on the R3.
148, right?
148, sorry. So all of those parcels are in. So if you're wondering why the parcel list looks like that, it's because of those condo individual parcels.
Okay. I move for approval?
All right. Please vote. Should we vote verbally, City Clerk?
You're the only one that's voting.
I'm voting yes. I'm assuming that, okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, Agenda item 54 through 54B, 54-25-0332-DFAC LLC, on the following land use entitlement project request on 1.65 acres located on the west side of MLK Boulevard, 370 feet south of Washington Avenue. 54A, 25-0332-VAR1, to allow an 80-foot lot width where 100 feet is required. Point 08 acres. 54B, 25-0332-CON1, from RE Residential Estates and C1 Limited Commercial to C2 General Commercial. The applicant owner is DFA LLC. The Planning Commission recommends approval on the entire land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5. Ms. Summers Armstrong, it's a public hearing, which I now declare open. The applicant is present. Is there anything further you would like to share with us at this time?
The only thing I would add to that, Mayor, is the, I think the denial stems from the fact that one of these parcels doesn't meet the minimum requirement of 100 feet to rezone. But we're rezoning it so that we can combine all these into one parcel. And we have to do that before we can combine them.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone interested in speaking on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Seth Floyd, for the record, Mayor, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to rezone to C2, a parcel that does not meet the Title 19 development standard for lot width for that zone. The lot width variance is therefore not justified by the physical site constraints, and therefore staff is recommending denial of the rezoning and the variance.
Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Ms. Kelly?
Yes, Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, pardon me, a point of clarification, and I don't know whether to direct to Mr. Floyd or Mr. Dorkak. Is the staff, when they do reviews, if it's not in compliance with an ordinance or a plan, is the staff allowed to... plan, is the staff allowed to still recommend approval? Okay, thank you.
Jeff Dorkak, City Attorney, I would echo what Director Floyd mentioned earlier. As practice, and I don't think there's anything that would allow otherwise in the code, which would make sense. It's a very, it's a straightforward, technical, black and white review. Do these things meet Title 19, yes or no? And that's what they go through. If not, staff denial. If they meet everything, staff approval. And that's the end of the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong? You know what, I think would be a wonderful idea at this time, let us take a five-minute break, and we'll be back. We're taking a five-minute break.
Thank you, okay.
...their opinion, would you agree to what we did with the previous ones? It just was all with prejudice? And then, once you have a, we've gotten things squared away, we come back.
I would say yes, except I have a hard time understanding the thought process behind that because MLK is a major commercial corridor. So, you see, all over the city where there's residuals behind the commercial land development on a major street like that, and behind it, there's a street and residence. It doesn't seem like that should be an issue, to me.
The challenge that we have is that Harvey Munford is an access street, and there's access onto those properties from Harvey Munford at this moment, not from MLK. And so, if you want to use them for any purpose while you're working your development, you would be accessing it from Harvey Munford, which is a residential street. If you look at all of the two book-in commercials, they have access either from Washington, or Bonanza, or from MLK. Those two don't have that, and we don't have any development. We don't have a development plan for you right now, but if, once the zoning is changed, you can still have some use of those properties in a C-2 manner, and the only access is from Harvey Munford, which is a residential street.
So, are you saying that C-2 is the wrong zoning for these? If I went in for a C-1, you would...
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, in the present condition, without a plan...
Okay.
You're not bringing in a development plan, you're just asking for a rezoning. If you had a development plan, we have, we just did one a couple of weeks ago, same setup. When they came to us, they came with a plan, and we talked about access. Everything was all wrapped into one, and we knew that there would be no access on a residential street, because that's how they presented it to us. You're giving us step-by-step, which is fine, but we've made it, I've made it, ask you, and you agreed, on the other side of the street, that's still residential, you still have a neighbor that's residential. I would just like to allow you to be able to come back.
Okay.
All right. So, that would be my motion, withdrawal without prejudice. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion carries. Okay. We're going to go back to item 53, which I inadvertently passed over. Agenda item 53. Twenty-five dash zero three three one dash C O N one, rezoning applicant-owner D F A L L C for possible action on a land-use entitlement project request from R E Residence Estates to C-2 general commercial on a 0.65 acres at 1700 Bonanza Road. Planning commission and staff both recommend approval. This is a public hearing that I now declare open. The applicant is present. Is there anything else you wish to add?
Just that I got my fingers crossed that I can get this one through.
(laughing) Don't tell us about your project.[244.23][244.23](laughing) Staff, do you have anything you wish to contribute?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Seth Floyd, for the record, the proposed rezoning from R E to C-2 conforms to the existing general plan designation of commercial, and is compatible with adjacent commercial and office land uses. The subject site is located along Bonanza Road, a major collector, and is suitable for future commercial development, therefore, staff is recommending approval of the requested rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard at this time? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council members? In that case, I will entertain a motion, Ms. Summers Armstrong.
I just have one question. Are you, can you assure us that you will enter while the land is empty, because it is empty right now? And I'm going to air a little laundry here, okay? It's not dirty, but it's a little stained. We had some problems on Harvey Munford with Connex containers lined up. We're still having some issues with Connex containers that are being placed on property, and things are stacked up. I think Mr. Floyd can speak to that. I need to just commit to that you will not run trucks down the street, that you'll enter from Bonanza, and that we will have clear understanding of the storage issues, that we won't have a repeat of the storage issues that we have had on the R3 property and on the R E property at the top of the, of the, of the street. And, Mr. Floyd, if you could just, kind of just give us a little brief overview of some of the challenges.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman Seth Floyd, for the record. So, going back about six or eight months, there have been several code violations on some of the properties that are reflected on the maps that Mr. McKnight, Mr. Benson showed. One of those issues was the storage of Connex containers. At least one of those cases has been closed, and we have been doing windshield surveys. I think, I believe you're right, there is one that is still open, and we will be following up on those as well. So, with your direction, if this gets approved today on that site, we will, we will keep an eye on that and make sure there, there's no improper outdoor storage on the site.
Thank you. Are we okay?
Hundred percent. I have my work on that.
Wonderful. In that case, Madam Mayor, I would move for approval.
Thank you so much. Please vote. Motion carries.
Thank you all for your time.
Are we done here?[427.53][427.53](laughing) Thank you.
You tell me.
No, I think we are. But I'll be back.
I was gonna, if you don't mind indulging me, I'm inclined to support this project. I think the plans are, it is the future. And I'm assuming that you're planning on coming back...
I am.
...with additional information at the appropriate time.
Yes, ma'am. For sure.
All right. We will look forward to seeing you at that time.
Okay.
I would just want to weigh in as well. I would love to, a picture to see what the future plans are, and I also look forward to supporting them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, goodbye. Where am I? Okay. 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 I think, are we, okay. Agenda item 51 has been held in abeyance. Where, no, wait. Okay, give me a minute. Okay, got it. Thank you so much. Okay. Items forty-eight to forty-eight D. Twenty-five, twenty-five dash zero two eight six on land-use entitlement project requests on approximately 940 acres on the north side of Moccasin Road, approximately 16 feet east of U.S. Highway 95. Item forty-eight A. Twenty-five dash zero two eight six dash C O N one from U., undeveloped, TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development, general plan designation to TD Traditional Development. Forty-eight B. Twenty-five dash zero two eight six dash VAC one. Petition to vacate portions of BLM Right-of-Way Grant easements on the north side of Moccasin Road near the North Sky Canyon Drive, Park Drive alignment. Forty-eight C. Twenty-five dash zero two eight six dash DIR one regarding the adoption of the Monument Hills Development Agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Monument Hills Partners LLC. Forty-eight D. Twenty-five dash zero two eight six dash DIR two regarding the adoption of the Monument Hills Parks Agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Monument Hills Partners LLC. The applicant is City of Las Vegas, and the owner is United States of America. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on the entire land-use entitlement project. These are in Ward Six, Ms. Bruni, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. May I have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, for the record. This project is the culmination of over eight years of planning, outreach, and negotiations. The project began to take shape with the adoption of the Upper Las Vegas Wash Vision Plan in 2017, followed by the City Council's selection of Olympia Companies as the developer partner in 2019. Since then, considerable efforts have been put forth to engage our regional partners and stakeholders, including the Las Vegas Paiute Tribe, the National Park Service, the Protectors of Tulley Springs, Bureau of Land Management, Clark County School District, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, as well as the U.S. Air Force. At the core of the project are two components that the City Council has affirmed as a priority for the city, those being the development of a community within, within the larger master plan development, specifically for the military members and their families, and secondly, the establishment of economic driver within the community that will bring highly-skilled jobs to the area. The Plan Before You accomplishes those goals, as well as others outlined within the Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan. The proposed development emphasizes sensitivity to the surrounding natural environment, housing for local workforce, and promoting economic development. The subject site does not encroach into the Tulley Springs Fossil Bed National Monument, and buffering will be provided adjacent to both the monument and tribal lands. The proposed rezoning to the TD Traditional Development Zoning District is in conformance with the underlying TND Traditional Neighborhood Development General Plan Land Use Designation. The associated development agreement and parks agreement are in conformance with Nevada Rising Statutes 278.0201, and accomplishes the goals and objectives of the Upper Las Vegas Wash Vision Plan and the Las Vegas 2050 Master Plan. Staff therefore recommends approval of the project. Thank you.
Mr. Brunauer, do you wish to identify yourself and your principal?
Yes. Good afternoon, Your Honor, Members of the Council. My name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Olympia Companies, and with me, to my left here, is Chris Armstrong with Olympia Companies. Both of us will have some comments here going through the presentation. I think the first thing that I'd like to do before we get into the development agreement, what Peter was mentioning, is just give you a little bit of background about Olympia and the investments that they've made up in this northwest area to get to being selected as the master developer for this 940-acre BLM parcel. And many of you have seen this, as we've had discussions with you over the last couple of months. What this is, is a regional picture of the northwest area here on the map. The property that we're going to be talking about today is this here. I call it the blank canvas, which is up by the Paiute Reservation, but I want to take you for a little bit of a ride going from the south of, down, it's the south of the northwest area, all the way up to this project, so you can appreciate the amount of economic development between the city and Olympia have created here, leading up to the BLM 940. The first thing I do want to point out, is you see this red area here? This is known as Sky Summit. This was in Councilwoman Allen Polinsky's area, we just got done within the last year or so. That took a year-plus of negotiations. This is a $2 billion economic development agreement that we put together, where we are in conjunction, working with the city, to help build Sheep Mountain Parkway in this area. Just directly across the street is Sky Hills, another development by Olympia that's under construction today, which is approximately another $1 billion of economic development, of infrastructure and value that's created in this area. As you go further up along Sheep Mountain Parkway, this area is known as Sky Canyon. We got this done many years ago, Sky Canyon in here. This is about a $2 billion development agreement that I'm showing you here of stuff that's being done here. This also is a part of Sky Canyon. We called this at one point in time, Sky Canyon East. That was the creator under Olympia Companies, which was sold over to Lanar Homes, which is now Sunstone, which is about a $2.5 billion development here for a master plan that's currently under construction. Now, it takes us north of Moccasin in this area for the 940 acres. I'm proud, along with Chris, standing before you and working with your staff. Today, what we're presenting to you is about a $3.5 billion development agreement that is planned for a master plan community called Monument Hills. As Chris will tell you, in Monument Hills, the goal is, there's going to be two types of people living there. It's going to be the people living in Monument Hills, who live there, and the second person is going to be the person who wants to live in Monument Hills. I hear that from Chris all the time through the negotiations, and that's a motto of Olympia. So, what I'd like to do is, the neat thing about these development agreements, and when you're dealing with vacant land, it's like a blank piece of canvas here. You just see the red here, and that's all you see. After many meetings, and many hours, and as I think Peter mentioned, there was a vision here about eight years ago. We've been negotiating over six years. Chris and I are still friends. We still have respect with your staff, and your staff has been great to work with. As a matter of fact, as I told Councilwoman Bruni, when we're going through this process, at one of the lower points of negotiations, I looked at her, and she didn't have the confidence. I told her, I said, "We're going to get there. Don't worry, this is how negotiations go." And so, that's why we're standing here today, and we're excited to present this development to you. Now, as I'm showing you all these different colors, and this is like the artist now is on the blank canvas, putting a community together. So, we've sat with your staff for over the last six years. We created this vision up here in the northwest. We've worked many hours, where Councilwoman Bruni was in these negotiation meetings, and was in there along with the language, and then at the end, we had the closer with Mike coming in, your city manager, and Mike Janson did a great job to wrap up most of the issues, or all the issues, is the reason why we're here. But with that being said, there's some nuances here that are very important before I turn, before I turn it over for any questions. What is unique about this master plan community is, this is going to be the first master plan community in the country that will have airport, excuse me, military housing, okay? We have military housing that's prepared, that's planned in this area, which is down in the southwest portion of our property here. We've worked very long and hard with your staff, and with the federal government. We've been to Creech Air Force Base, we've talked to Nellis officials, we've been in communications with them with respect to this type of development. And what's unique about this, the first in this country, is we have no subsidies here that we're getting from the federal government for the city. Olympia's coming in here, and they're coming in, and they're building what is really needed, not only just housing is needed anywhere, but this here, housing for military personnel. So, that's one of the great things that's coming out of this development agreement, and that's what I usually start with when I start talking about how great this community is going to be, because we're actually adding housing that's for a purpose for our military personnel who need that. The other important piece here is known as the Economic Development Parcel, as I'm showing you in this area here. We've had a lot of negotiations with your staff. This is another key component of the development in this master plan community. What is in the development agreement, it requires us to work with the city. It's either the city or us are going to bring a developer here. The developer is a Fortune 500, Fortune 2000. It may be some type of private, public-sector company coming in here, in, coming in and developing. A minimum of 1,000 jobs is going to be required, is, that's the goal. That comes out to probably about 300,000 to 350,000 square feet of some form of office space. So, this is a job creator, okay? Not only now do we have the military housing, but we have a huge economic job creator, as I'm showing you there. This area here is where our mixed-use commercial is going to be. It's obviously, we can't tell you exactly who's going to be the end-user today for commercial. As you know, commercial changes over the years, and this is probably several years away, but we do have commercial, as Chris has told you, and he's, and everybody knows, Olympia has a commercial component. That was critical when, when they were selected in this process, and so, we have a commercial component here that will come forward when we're ready to come with the commercial users and end-users. The other important part here in this master plan community, which I also call somewhat of a first, is, and this is with Councilwoman's leadership here, she wanted some type, form of, some type of affordable housing here, okay? And what Olympia is going to do, and what we've agreed with Mr. Janson and your staff in working through one of the final components here, is we're going to be providing that 150 AMI bumper, that benchmark in that area. And what we've, what we've negotiated with, the units that would be in here, in this M category in orange, in this mixed-use category, and in this pink area, which is the military housing, that is where we're going to have our, what we call our affordable housing, in that area. So, in the development agreement, there are certain requirements that we have to meet and report on, and we negotiated that in the details, but to let you know, that is another key component, where we're not getting any type of subsidies there, and this is something that Olympia's doing. It's a little more of a haircut as you go through a development process, but that's what's been negotiated. So, in this area, there's a lot of action going on, just in the southwest area. And then, one of the other things I want to point out is, as you can see with all of this development here, the different colors represent, the yellow, the orange represents the mixed uses of residential development. This is a master plan that's going to be 6,000 residential units. When you multiply that by people per household, that's approximately over 15,000 people. It's a mini-city that we're creating here, right? Which is great, and that's why it's a 3.5 economic boost here to the economy, a 3.5 billion economic boost. Outside of that, in the green areas, one of the things I do want to point out that was added on in the 11th hour, and this was with Councilwoman Bruni, wanted a part of her vision, was having some added soccer fields. So, as part of our agreement in here, this is a 10-acre site that is going to be designed for soccer fields, and in that area, that will give you a conceptual design in there that we added in this, in our negotiations that came in within the last month or two, actually, over the summer, whenever that was, a few months ago. The other thing of the master plan community, a part of what Chris always talks about is the building blocks of how they build their master plan communities for Olympia. We ought to have schools. We've met with the school district in this area here. We're looking to put a charter school first, because respectfully, it takes some time for the Clark County School District to get in here and start building schools. So, typically, what Olympia does in their master plan communities, such as Sky Canyon, they come in, and they will go and find a charter school partner, discount the property to bring them in, so we at least will have a school early on in this community, which is located here. The other thing I do want to point out is, as you may know, the city and Olympia has worked with the Paiutes for many years, okay? And matter of fact, on record, in this development agreement, we have what is known as an inter-local government agreement. I think it's an IGA. And in that inter-local government agreement, there is agreement on development standards and design guidelines protecting the golf course and the Paiute properties over here. So, what you have is some extra green space and buffering, you have some single-story homes to help protect the views, and there's other design standards and development standards that are a part of that agreement. So, we have sat down, we as a team, meaning the city and Olympia, have sat down with the Paiutes over the years and kept them in communications, kept them a part of this development. One of the other nuances, because there's a ton of open space here, as you can see in the trails that connect, one of the neat things is, if you're a resident out here, you're going to be able to walk around the exterior of this project here, because there's walking paths on, on the exterior. It's about a three-and-a-half-mile loop, so you could walk, you could run, you know, do whatever you want in this area. There's going to be interpretive trails in here, there's going to be workout stations, and so on. So, the last thing that I want to point as a reminder on behalf, and I know Chris is going to say a couple of things here, is we went through an extensive process to be selected. As a matter of fact, we, we were in competition with another group. There were two groups. It was very extensive with the council. We were selected unanimously. We've stayed, stayed with the city for the last six years. Olympia has spent millions of dollars, not on me, but on their other consultants, I wish, but on their other consultants, in getting, getting here, on the fact of that we could get here for a development. And I, just a lot of thank-yous out there. I want to start with Councilwoman Bruni. She's been in all those, as I always say, she saw how the sausage got made in, in these development agreements, and now she knows, one day, when this is built, she'll know all the little nuances of why things were agreed to, and why we did this and did that. And that's the cool thing about all the development agreements that Chris and I are involved in, that I walked you up on that path going up, is we know a little bit of everything about these master plan communities that no one will ever know, but those are things, memories that you have negotiating. Your staff, you know, starting with Mike Janson, you know, from city management on down, you have Seth, you have Peter, you have Lucian, you have a total great team, right? The good news is, we know each other so well from doing all these development agreements. The bad news is, it's kind of hard to argue, because when you negotiate, you don't like to negotiate against your friends. It's easier if we were adversaries, right? So, that's a little bit hard when we, when we do negotiations, but we get the, get the job done. And with that, I think, that's pretty much it. I'm going to turn over to Chris fairly quickly, but like I said, a lot of hours have been put into this, and this is going to be a great product, just like all the other master plan communities that Olympia has done. That's why I'm a little bit excited here, and wanted to talk a little bit more than Chris, because this is another jewel that we're getting done here today.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate that. After all of Bob's words, I don't know if I have anything else to say. I think you got it all out on the table, but I just wanted to extend our appreciation. It has been, you know, a very long process, as Bob indicated, back in, in 2019, and the process was a very open process, a very competitive process, with a number of people who, you know, made the initial cut, I think, and then there was a final presentation between a couple of teams. We ultimately were selected unanimously by the, by the city council, so we appreciate that. And since that time, we've been working, you know, diligently with staff and all of our consultants, as Bob has indicated, tremendous amount of effort over the six years, and, you know, a lot of outreach as well, which we take a lot of pride in, in making sure that we're in regular communication with our, our partners, so whether or not be the Paiute, whether or not be the National Park Service, we're, we're coordinating some activities as we develop our plan and our master plan for our parks, and our, you know, we're going to have interpretive centers that involve the National Park Service, as well as the Paiutes throughout our community. So, we're really excited about that, and like I said, take a lot of pride in, in making sure that we have, you know, really good communication with all of the partners in the area. The Protectors of Tulley Springs, which is a, a, a small but strong, you know, group of folks who are, personally have a lot of vested interest in protecting the national monument, and we've, we established a partnership, actually, before we secured this property with them, and look forward to that ongoing partnership. And then, we're just, as Bob indicated, I'd just like to extend our, you know, our appreciation for everybody who's been involved in this process. It has taken a, a long time. Some people have come and gone, and some people have stayed the entire time, so we appreciate that, and also all of council, and Councilwoman Bruni as well, for your leadership. So, thanks very much. We're very excited. We take a lot of pride in our projects. You know, we try to do everything, and once we do one project, we like to learn from what we did on that last project, take, you know, all of the great things we've learned, and implement them here, and sort of, you know, take new ideas and implement those as well. So, we're super excited to, to move forward and appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearings. Are there, a public hearing, is there, are there any questions or comments from members of the city council?
Yeah. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. For me, I feel like the 940, the number 940 does not just symbolize the acreage, but also the number of overtime hours that we all have put in this summer, and I, I do want to thank by, or start by thanking you all, and, you know, Bob and your team were amazing, and, you know, this project's been going on so long that we, I want to acknowledge Steve Ford and Tom Perigo, who also spent a lot of hours, but certainly our team, Lucian, Peter, Seth, and John Radilla, just working overtime to get this done. I look at this, and I, I'm just so proud. I think this is going to be an amazing, beautiful community that everyone will want to live in. And to that point, when I look at how much you've done in the northwest, Chris, my hope is that you and Gary Goit will, you know, want to come live in the northwest, and maybe even in Monument Hills, because it is going to be just an amazing community. So, thank you for sharing the vision and working really hard to create a, a community that everyone will want to live in. So, I feel a little emotional. I'm so proud and happy to make a motion to approve. Item number forty-eight, twenty-five dash zero two eight six. Oh, A through D.
A, yes, correct. All right. There is a motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Thank you very much.
Agenda item forty-nine through forty-nine B. Twenty-five dash zero two nine four on the following land-use entitlement project request on 0.42 acres at 2147 North Decatur Boulevard, Suite 110, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. Forty-nine A. Twenty-five dash zero two nine four dash V A R one to allow 14 parking spaces where 48 spaces are required. Forty-nine B. Twenty-five dash zero two nine four dash S U P one for proposed motor vehicle parts sales installation... Zone, 49A, 25-0294-VAR1 to allow 14 parking spaces where 48 spaces are required. 49B, 25-0294-SUP1 for proposed motor vehicle parts sales, installation and repair, motor vehicle repair, minor use. The applicant is Dave Duque Jimenez, and the owner is the 2147 North Decatur Series of L&amp;R Future LLC. The planning commission recommends approval on the entire land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. And our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present. Would you please state your name and tell us about your project?
My name is Dave Jimenez. I stay on 4429 Mossy Rock Court. I'm seeking permission to operate my small automotive business at this location, like you said, 2147 North Decatur Boulevard, Unit 110. This proposal is exactly the same way as it was before, previously recommended by a planning commission. There has been no changes or additions to the project. I'm simply asking for final approval so I can move forward with this permit.
Thank you so much. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing to operate a motor vehicle repair, minor use, with insufficient parking. Therefore, staff recommends denial of both the variance and the special use permit. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments by the members of the council?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Summers Armstrong.
Thank you. Staff, could you please explain how we got here? I think that there's some, part of the story is missing.
Sure. Through you, Madam Mayor. Peter Longstein, for the record. So this tenant space was previously entitled for a minor auto repair garage. As indicated in the staff report, the use had ceased to operate for a period of time, in this case, I believe, a period of one year, and therefore the entitlement has lapsed, and therefore they're seeking to re-entitle this tenant suite for minor auto repair.
Thank you. Can you also please put up the pictures that you can see from Decatur?
Jeff, if you can go to the photos from the presentation.
So this, if I'm understanding correctly, there are other businesses in this particular space that you're starting to reopen your business, and their licenses allow them to have certain space, right? Parking. And all three of you together, you should have 48 spaces, but you only have 14. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when I look at the pictures, I am very concerned. If you can just kind of go back a couple of pictures for me, please. We have people parking in the landscape. We have people parking on both sides in the landscape. There just is not enough room for the number of spaces that you need in order for you all to run your businesses jointly in this space. And it's a huge reach from 48 spaces to 14. That's a fourth, right? My math is not great, but it's close to a fourth. And I'm just very concerned about that. I know things were tough and you had let your license go, which is why the other people came in and now they've got the parking and you don't. But I think I'm going to agree with staff on this, that there just is not enough parking in this location for an additional business that does automotive. And we can see it evidenced by the pictures and the parking on the curb and parking in the landscape, I think is an indicator that you just don't have enough parking. And so I would like to make a motion for denial of this.
Before you do that, can I see if there's anyone else that has any comments or questions? Any other members of the council have any questions? Okay, thank you. Let me ask you something. Is there any way for you to remedy the, that is a serious divide between the parking spaces you have available and that which our, which we require as a city? Is there any way you could remedy that?
Yeah, so I also, these concerns were brought up with the planning commission too. And just a note, most of these vehicles on property are personal vehicles to the other tenants. This has nothing to do with customer vehicles. Any customer vehicle that is brought to me specifically is always stored inside, would be stored inside the garage. The businesses around, or next to me is, in the other picture you can see, there's only one mechanic next to me, which he would probably be the one with more cars. The business next to me is a smog and window tint. The, that business is where cars will come and go. There are no cars stay overnight for a window tint. The same thing with the smog. A smog will only probably take five to 10 minutes. So those, that, that is a business that has cars coming and going, no cars stay overnight. Along with next to that is a tire shop with the same, same thing in a way. Tires just come and go and no cars that are for them would be there overnight. Again, most of those cars have been moved. This was, this picture was taken a few months ago, and most of those personal cars were told to be moved by the landlord, but yeah, again, most of those cars were personal. No customer vehicles would be parked outside or anywhere other than inside the lot, in our garage space.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a follow-up?
Yes, of course.
So where are your employees parking their cars?
So I actually don't have any employees. It would only be me and my dad. We live literally in front of the shop, so we would commute together. And if anything, we might not even have to drive all the time, if that is really an issue. If not, well, right here, we have, like you said.
Do you have a picture? You could put it under the screen and we could see it.
So right there with the five spots that we have marked out are the ones that were given to us specifically in case if we do need a parking spot. So if, let's say, me and my dad need a spot, we would just use up one of the five spots that we have right there. Again, the customer cars that we're working on usually would be inside, so those parking spots aren't even being used by us right now.
Ms. Summers Armstrong.
I guess I'm unclear of if your landlord is going to give you the five spots, which you hadn't been using, that means that your neighbors are displaced and now they have to park someplace else. And the only place that's nearby is the adjacent residential street, which you should not be parking on, anyone, right? And so, staff, could you help me understand what kind of controls, when we ask for these parking spots is for a reason, right? Which is to keep commercial parking and business on a commercial space. So if there's not room, what do we generally see happen?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Peter Longstein, for the record. So overflow from the site onto the adjacent roadways where there is ability to park. So in this particular case, you could have overflow parking that could impact the residential street to the south of the subject site. As you've already seen in the pictures, you can have parking in areas that aren't dedicated for parking, so you would have parking in landscape. The remedy for this would be code enforcement for onsite property and parking enforcement for off-site. And it's, you know, those efforts come with their own challenges for city staff, you know, to indicate where a car is coming from, for what business, to monitor, and those kind of things. So if the city was going to go, you would have parking enforcement and code enforcement.
Wait, I'm sorry, Ms. Armstrong, another question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just from this view, it's very apparent that right now this action item is related to 110, which I assume is the red box.
Yeah.
How many other suites are in this shopping center?
So in total, there's four.
So all four of you have to share 14 parking spaces. Wow, okay. Thank you.
Will entertain a motion?
Today's been a rough day. We need businesses in Ward 5. We need them. We want you to do business in Ward 5. But I'm going to tell you from personal experience, I know what happens when we don't have enough parking. I live off of Washington and Martin Luther King, and we have a business on Bonanza that doesn't have parking, and they have 20 cars parked on a residential street every single day. I've seen people walk from that business a half a block to park their cars on a residential street that looks very much like the residential street that's to the south of you. And when we are not mindful of this, we end up having issues encroach into communities that were there before. And so I'm going to move for denial and encourage you to work with our EUD department to try and find another possible space for you to go to, to set up your business. I just don't think there's enough, you're the latecomer, and so everybody else is in front of you and they're taking up all the spots. And I just think that this is, this is just going to turn out bad. We're going to end up with code enforcement all the time, parking enforcement, trying to make sure that the neighborhood is not having cars parked up and down. It's just a problem. And I'm sorry that this is the situation, but again, our job is to make sure that the neighborhood surrounding is just as protected as a business that wants to come in. That's my motion.
So your motion is to deny. All right. Please vote. Okay. Your motion is passed, and this project is denied.
Okay. Thank you.
For the record, Councilman Knutson has been excused for the rest of the meeting. Item 50 through 50B, 25-0322 on the following land use entitlement project request on 0.19 acres at 512 North First Street, Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. 50A, 25-0322-ZON1 from C2 General Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential. Item 50B, 25-0322-WVR1 to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet is required for an existing single-family dwelling, Area 2. The applicant owner is Raymond Hamadani. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5, Ms. Summers Armstrong. This has been your day, and our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Laura Dreya, 520 South Fourth Street. I'm here on behalf of the current owner of the property.
Would you like to tell us about the project?
Yes. This application is a result of a fire that occurred to a single-family home in 2022. There's been a couple of owners since that time. I'll do my best to condense the many details of this matter that span several decades since this house was built in the mid-1900s. Following the fire, the building department logged a punch list of items that need to be addressed. However, before that this can be processed by the building department, there's minor housekeeping items that must first be processed through the planning department. These housekeeping items were very unexpected, as the most were rooted in the city zoning act, in the city zoning action and initiatives that were adopted in the 1960s. This action included a rezone in and about the larger area, but it also rezoned this parcel, which is at the bottom of a residential cul-de-sac, and now it's an anomaly. So now I think we have a situation where a home is in a cul-de-sac, it's a non-conforming use as it's in C2. Many matters on the building department's citation are solved by simply returning the zone to C1 as it was assigned when it was built. We also were asked by planning to re-establish two onsite parking spaces. So I'd like to thank Cassandra Serna, the assigned planner, for helping me navigate and simplify this situation to a point where it has planning support. I accept all of her conditions of approval, and I ask that you follow planning's favorable recommendation as well.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Seth Floyd, for the record. Mayor's staff finds the proposed rezoning from C2 to R1 to be compatible with surrounding residential uses and in alignment with the city's long-term planning goals. The previously requested waiver of parking requirements has been eliminated as two parking spaces are being provided on-site, and staff supports the request of rezoning and waiver of the building setback. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, is there a motion, Councilwoman Summers Armstrong?
I just want to tell you that we were just walking this neighborhood a couple of weeks ago, and it is looking very exciting that people are coming back and updating their homes over there, and I'm excited to see people moving back into the Biltmore area, which is where it is. And I'm going to move for approval.
Please vote.
For both A and, 51A and B.
Thank you so much for the clarification. Vote. Post. Motion passes. Thank you so much. Item 51, A and B were held in abeyance to the December 17, 2025 council meeting. Items 55A through 55C were held in abeyance to the January 21, 2026 city council meeting. Agenda item 56, 25-0353-VAC1, vacation. Applicant-owner, Northland LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for a petition to vacate a portion of an existing Bureau of Land Management, BLM Right-of-Way Grant for Sewer Drainage and Roadway generally located on the southwest corner of Brent Lane and Eric Lloyd Street, TD Traditional Development Zone, L Residential Low, and GC General Commercial, Sky Canyon Special Land Use Designation. Ward 6, Ms. Bruni, this is a public hearing that I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Chris Serini.
Would you like to tell us about, please give us your name and then tell us about your project.
Yes. Chris Serini, 500 South Rancho Drive, Suite 17, Alvin Nevada 89106. I'm civil engineer for the project. I'm here representing Woodside Homes. This is for Lira, Unit 3, in the Sunstone Master Plan. Unit 1 is constructed, Unit 2 is under construction, and Unit 3, we're working on permitting right now. Part of that is vacating a drainage easement that is located in the southeast corner of Unit 3. This is an existing BLM easement that is no longer needed as we're taking drainage through our onsite drainage easements and streets and the sewer, and drainage will come out and connect into the existing storm drain in Brent Lane. So as part of that, we just ask for your approval of the vacation.
Thank you so much. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter Longstein, for the record. Staff has no objection to the requested petition to vacate the city's interest in the Bureau of Land Management's Right-of-Way Grants for Sewer Drainage and Roadway purposes. As such, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion, Councilwoman Bruni.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 56, 25-0353.
Please vote. Post. Motion passes. Items 57A and B were held in abeyance to the January 21, 2026 city council meeting. Items 58A and 58B are held in abeyance to the January 21, 2026 city council meeting. Item 59. Item 59, 25-0389 on the following land use entitlement project request on 12.23 acres on the north side of Alta Drive, approximately 2,115 feet east of Walupai Way, C1 Limited Commercial Zone. 59A, 25-0389-VAR1 to allow 863 parking spaces where 1,018 are required. 59B, 25-0389-SDR1 for a proposed two-story, 178,400-square-foot medical office development with waivers of building placement and perimeter landscape buffer requirements. The applicant owner is Panther Alta 12 LLC. The planning commission recommends approval on the entire land use entitlement project. Staff recommends denial on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 2. Ms. Kelly, and our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. For the record, John Curran, 10801 West Charleston, here on behalf of the applicant. If I can first present a brief history of the site. My group acquired this 12.2-acre parcel from the City of Las Vegas through a disposition and development agreement in 2022. We closed on the land in 2023, and that DDA mandated that we develop a minimum of 100,000 square feet of medical office at this site. The site is also D restricted for medical and ancillary uses, so this medical use is certainly appropriate for the site. We got this site entitled previously in 2023 with a different design, and that design included three-story buildings. It included 20,000 feet of retail. We went to market with that design for quite some time and ultimately decided to redesign the site with a more thoughtful approach, and we're really pleased to present that updated design today. So we're proposing a total of four buildings that sort of work with the curvature of the site. The irregular parcel shape necessitated a lot of our design decisions, which we'll get into some of the corresponding waivers we requested. But these are four two-story buildings. The design we're proposing today is less intense than what was previously approved across the board. They're two-story buildings as opposed to the three stories we had previously. It's less total square footage. We eliminated the retail altogether, and the parking variance we're requesting is a lower deviation to code. Present some renderings of the project. We think it's a really thoughtful design. We've got these earthy palette colors with some wood accents and a nice, modern-looking design that's been really well-received by the marketplace. You can see it's going to be really lushly landscaped. I am requesting a few landscape waivers, and we talked about it at length at planning commission, so I'll just summarize some of those things here. I think we have a waiver of perimeter and buffer landscaped trees. 338 trees are required. We're proposing 335. So we're short just three. However, I'd point out that we have a total of 420 trees in total on this site, so really exceeding code overall, and it's going to be a lush, green site, and that's in addition to the 3,500 shrubs and cacti as well. On the parking variance we're requesting, it's a total of 15% deviation, I believe. Frankly, it doesn't do us any good to build a project that's underparked. When we design a site, we're worried about what the end users are going to ask us and what they're going to be looking for. In the world of medical office development, there's sort of a gold standard parking ratio, and that's about four to five spaces per thousand square feet of office. We are about 4.85 spaces here, so certainly adequately parked. We also designed and developed the Queens Ridge Medical One, just 500 feet west of here, and it's a similar parking ratio. We've never had any parking challenges there. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I respectfully request you follow planning commission's vote for approval.
Thank you so much. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Peter Longstein, for the record. The applicant is requesting a variance in site development plan review for revised medical office development totaling 178,400 square feet. Their request includes, as indicated, 15% parking reduction, waivers from building placement and landscape buffer width, and they expect exceptions to not meet perimeter landscape buffer materials. Staff finds the requested variance to be self-imposed and propose parking insufficient for the intensive use. Therefore, Staff has recommended denial of both of the variance and site development plan review. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? I will entertain a motion at this time, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve item 59, 25-0389.
Shall we vote?
Wait, 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 wait. I'm sorry. Including 59A and 59B.
Thank you so much. Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Agenda item 60, 25-0406 on the following land use entitlement project request on a portion of 35.74 acres at the northwest corner of McWilliams Avenue and H Street, T4N, T4 Neighborhood Zone, 60A, 25-0406-VAC1, petition to vacate public right-of-way located along Washington Avenue, generally located on the south side of Washington Avenue, 175 feet west of H Street. 60B, 25-0406-SDR1 for a proposed four-story, 223-unit mixed-use development with 10,389 square feet of commercial space with waivers of title 19.09 Form-based Code Development Standards. The applicant owner is Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on the entire land use entitlement project. These are in Ward 5. Ms. Summers Armstrong, and our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant present?
Yes, we are. And thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. This is actually the Phase 2 for the...
Would you state your name for the record?
My name is Eric Gross with KME Architects. We're at 5195 South Durango Drive, Suite 103. Again, this is the Phase 2 development of Marble Manor. We're actually hopefully going to be getting the permits for Phase 1 here in about a month. We're very excited for the start of this project. This is for 223 new units that are going to be developed as part of the five phases of the full development of Marble Manor. This is taking everything all the way up to the east side of J Street between Washington and McWilliams. And one of the things that we're very excited about this is we do have a couple of retail spaces that are going to be part of this, as well as a shell space for a future Headstart Daycare Center that is going to be serving the overall community, first serving Marble Manor, but also the community at large. So we are very excited for this. I also have a member from Brynshaw with the development to give a little bit of information on the types of units that we are going to have.
Hi, yes. I am Nick Pacera with Brynshaw Development, representing the developer partner of SNRHA and our team. I just wanted to note a breakdown of the 223 units that Eric mentioned and give you guys some additional information. Eighty-five of those 223 units are going to be PBV units, project-based vouchers, ranging from 30% AMI to 80%. Additionally, of those 223, 93 will serve residents at 50% AMI or below. Of the 223, 88 will be Lytech units, serving residents from 60% to 80% AMI. We also have 50 market rate units at the project, which is helping us meet the requirement of the Choice Neighborhoods grant that is assisting in the funding. This is truly a mixed-income project, and as Eric said, we are very excited to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Earlier during public... Oh, well, may I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The applicant is requesting a site development plan review and a vacation to facilitate the Phase 2 of the Marble Manor redevelopment project. Pro's development aligns with the Vision 2045 Downtown Master Plan, the 100 Plan, and the West Las Vegas Plan. Therefore, Staff is recommending approval of both the site development plan review and vacation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Katherine Duncan with the Unified West Side Neighborhood Association. My major concern is the way this development is engaging with the community. They have never answered our request to come and make a presentation at the Neighborhood Association. I have people knocking at my door on 1081 F Street now who don't know what's going on. They see that the buildings are being torn down, and they don't know what's happening. So I believe that they have tried to engage with us, but they just really don't know how to do it. So we propose some measures that they can use to come in and be better, so they can better inform the neighborhood of what's going on. But there seems to be a disconnect between the landowners, the property owners, the people who live there, and these developers. And we know that there was a $50 million grant awarded to them to engage the community, but the people don't feel that they have outreach to this development, and we really don't know what's going on, and we're not a part of it. There's also a complete streets development that's going along Washington Street. We don't know how complete streets or safe neighborhoods integrates with this neighborhood. We don't know their broadband infrastructure plan, where they're going to get their power, because we still have old power poles that are leaning over. We don't see any of this. We don't know what the streetscape is going to be, so there's just a lot of ideas that we could work with these developers, but there's been a disconnect, and we have not been engaged with them. So we believe they fail to meet the Choice Neighborhood Initiative's guidelines, and we would like for them to come back and truly engage the neighborhood in a meaningful way before this entitlement moves forward.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you.
Can somebody clarify for me? I was under the impression that this project was supported by the community and that they had worked very closely together. I don't know if this is a staff question, or Ms. Summers Armstrong could enlighten the rest of us, but do you have any idea about the communication, which is very important, of course?
We have someone from Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority here. I think it would be helpful if you could sort of give us an overview of what you all have been doing over the last couple of years.
I'd appreciate... Thank you so much. Could you state your name for the record?
Good morning, Frank... Well, afternoon. Frank Stafford, Director of Development Modernization with the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. Just speaking on the community engagement, this CNI project that started with HUD, we started the transformation plan back in 2021, and then we shipped it over to implementation, which is the part that you get the funding to actually build the units in 2023. HUD, along with the City of Las Vegas, who's our partner with this process, the project started with engagement with the residents of Marble Manor, as well as the community at large. We've had numerous meetings on the Marble Manor property, at the West Las Vegas school. So we did outreach with the community and the residents throughout every step of this project. We also have a marketing specialist that has also helped us increase getting the word out to the community. So we... HUD has... HUD is basically, you know, that's part of the requirement for the CNI. We meet with HUD, communicate with them all the time, and they're aware of all the meetings that we have, as well as with our consultant that HUD has overseeing the entire project.
May I ask you to confer with Ms. Duncan after this agenda item and see how you can better communicate with her organization that seems to have gaps in their knowledge of what's happening?
Yes, we'll be glad to do that.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Are there any other questions from the council? Yes. Ms. Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to comment that I was a previous board member of the Housing Authority, and the CNI grant was a partnership between the city and the Housing Authority to do a lot of the community outreach efforts. And I remember that we even hired folks to help us ensure that we were getting everyone into, especially the very beginning vision of what the community wanted to see in the redevelopment of Marble Manor. And I know that our Neighborhood Services staff has worked very hard in trying to engage the community and bringing them in and hearing from all folks who want to be part of the process. And I remember Councilman Creer putting it out and saying it in his announcements many times. The Housing Authority had a significant investment and responsibility in engaging residents. So I'm just speaking from the time that I sat on the board, that I did see a lot of announcements and notifications and things being done to engage the community. So I just wanted to say that I'm very excited that we're at this juncture, because as it was stated, '21 is where it started. But this is more exciting for me, because we actually are seeing renderings and progress, and eventually the buildup coming up from the ground. And hopefully, people who are from the community and want to come back to it will be able to be the very first residents of this awesome gem that will be the redevelopment of Marble Manor.
Ms. Bruni?
Thank you. I won't repeat what my colleague has shared, but I'm currently the Chair of the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, and we regularly receive reports of the progress with Marble Manor. And I will just share with the public, including Ms. Duncan, if you go to the newly rebranded website, which is so much better than it was earlier, there's actually... There's a section called CNI, and if you click on that, there's all the updated information on what's happening at Marble Manor. So just one more resource that the public can avail themselves of to find out what's going on.
Thank you so much. And at this time, Ms. Summers Armstrong, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of thoughts. I just want to say I'm really excited. I remember when these were first being discussed in 2021, and I was attending community meetings. Then I think we've had at least five that I've attended just this year at the Guy Center, as well as at the West Side School. And I think that you all are making a serious effort to get the information out. I know I'm sharing it in my newsletter, and also on Access Las Vegas, we've talked about this a couple of times. And every time I'm in the community, I'm talking about what is happening at Marble Manor. My feeling is that the community is excited about the rebirth of Marble Manor, and I can't express it any more than that, that it is a rebirth. What I really like about it is it's a master-planned community. So the first time on this scale in this urban center where we have mixed-income housing that is thoughtfully planned. And I'm excited about what's going to happen, and I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Shall we vote? Please post. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agenda item 61, held in abeyance to the December 17 city council meeting. Agenda item 62 was already presented earlier in our meeting. We will now set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings and nuisance litter abatements.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Agenda item 64, citizen participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion for two minutes? Would you please state your name for the record?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Johnny Rollinson. I reside at 5901 Mendoza Court. With me is my neighbor Ed Hicks. He resides next door to me, and we are here on a matter of concern for a home in our neighborhood that was recently sold. We live across the street, but the neighbors on either side also share our concern. It was expressed by the owner that they have the intent to turn this single-family residence into an 11-room property for rental to commuters, whatever that means. And we are in strong opposition to that. The... The concern we have is that the house has already been gutted, and they have been working on that premises. And we are here requesting that a stop-work order be imposed on that premises until this property owner has gone through the process and been permitted to restore this house to a single-family residence and not expand it into a boarding house or a mini-apartment complex.
Do you have the address, the location?
It's 5900 Mendoza Court, directly across the street from my home.
Okay, we will look into this. Not supposed to engage you in dialogue, but we will, rest assured, we will look into this matter. And Judge Rollinson, it's very nice to see you after all these years, and I thank you for coming and sharing this concern with us.
Thank you. I have been in contact with representatives from your office and also our Councilwoman Sandra, Sandra Thomas Armstrong. But we, the people still continue to work there, so our concern is whether or not they've continued to engage in working while the city is doing the process of getting them permitted. So we just wanted to bring this to the council's attention.
Okay. And Mr. City Manager, is it appropriate for me to ask you to have the appropriate person in, in our city government to look into this?
Yeah, Mayor Berkeley, Mike Johnson, City Manager, for the record, will take this information from Ms. Rollinson, and our code enforcement team will do the follow-up. So after this meeting, I'll work with Seth, we'll, we'll take it from there. And maybe what we can do is we can get Ms. Rollinson's contact information, so that we can give her an update on where we are, what we found.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 65, a council emerging, council emerging issues. Discussion regarding potential items for future city council agendas, this is for all wards. Any discussion must be limited to whether or not such proposed items shall be placed on a future agenda, and no discussion regarding the substance of any such proposed topic shall occur. No action shall be taken. Do any members of the council have any topics they would like to bring forward under this item? Seeing no one, we will move to Item 66. Council members' recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Ms. Summers Armstrong, if you promise me that you're going to go home right after the meeting, you will speak first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank everybody for your patience with all the coughing and hacking today. We're going to keep it brief. We were able to attend the Ninth Annual NPHC Sisterhood Luncheon, which is an event that the DMI9 hosts as a joint event. I was asked to be the keynote speaker. It was so much fun. I saw folks that I hadn't seen in a while, and these organizations come together to support community events, and on this date, they supported Dress for Success. And every woman who was there brought a brand-new bra to be given away. And we know that the basic, the foundation of looking good in business is to have a great bra, and they recognized that. And it was just a lovely event in support of the organizations, but also in support of women in need. On November 7th, we went to the Urban Chamber of Commerce's Green Tie Award Ceremony, another awesome event in the community, where we have the Urban Chamber of Commerce, whose goal really is to support small businesses in the community. They gave awards to some community leaders. And of course, it was Old Home Week to see many of my prior legislative folks, but also to see others in the community who really care about advancing the small businesses in our community. On November 8th, Ward 5, we're doing a lot of community outreach, and we had a twofer on November the 8th. First, we were with Cox Communications in what used to be the Rose Garden. It's now a garden more towards our local flora and fauna. Did a cleanup, pulled weeds, and it was lovely to see the folks out there really working so hard. And it's exciting to see our neighbors coming out and doing community service. And on the other side of Lorenzi Park, we had a paper shredding and RX drop-off, which was also well-attended, and we will, that was a special request from a constituent, and we will be doing more of these things in the future. Finally, this past Monday, the 17th, at the Westside Education and Training Center, teamed up with State Treasurer Zach Conine, and folks from the affordable housing space, Nevada Housing, Neighborhood Housing Services, and, oh gosh, Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, and other folks who are experts in this space came together to talk to the community about affordable housing, how we can work together, the need, and, and really to try and find solutions. So that was lovely, and we will be doing this more often. It was a special request that we do more of this type of outreach in the community. Upcoming events, tomorrow night is the holiday lighting in the Cox parking lot. Our awesome public works, folks have put up the beautiful candy canes and other festive lights on the poles, and tomorrow, we will light them up until Christmas. So we invite you all to come out. There's going to be hot chocolate and cookies, and the choir from Western High School is going to regale us with holiday music. We also have a community faith-based health fair happening on the 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 at Second Baptist Church over on Madison. All kinds of good information about health, nutrition. We'll have exams, dental, and eye exams, so we invite our neighbors to please take advantage of this wonderful event. And then on the 24th, Commissioner McCurdy and the mayor is also sponsoring, as well as myself and others, are sponsoring the Fourth Annual Blessed Giving Event. It's going to be at Peterson Community Center. This is an effort put together by Minister Stretch Sanders, and it's always good to see our neighbors who need help getting help for the holidays. On the 26th, 100 black men and other sponsors, including City of Las Vegas and my office, are supporting a Thanksgiving dinner, prepared dinner for seniors, veterans, and families in need. Ward 5 is concentrating on our seniors. We will have dinners delivered into our senior communities, and we are so excited that we are partnering with them, so that the seniors don't have to go out and pick up anything. It will be delivered to them already prepared. So if you're interested in assisting, I believe there's a QR code somewhere on this. And finally, as always, come out to Lorenzi Park, hit the green ball, get your stress down. I'm talking to myself. And enjoy the outdoors. The weather's amazing right now. It's, playing tennis when it's a little chilly is the best time of year, because you can really stay out there a long time. And finally, here's my team. I love these folks. They, they know I'm crazy, but they are supporting me 100% in my effort to be as responsive to the community as possible. There's a QR code to sign up for our newsletter. We've always got something going on, but if you need to make a direct connection, please call. You, you will connect with either Ara, Nora, or Julius at 702-229-5443. Thank you, Mayor, for your, all your indulgence in my, in my colleagues today. It was a lot, and I appreciate you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Summers Armstrong. Let me say that Julius did a very fine job representing you yesterday at the Neonopolis, and if, as your friend, as well as your colleague, please leave. All right. Ms. Allen Polanski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On Veterans Day, we were proud to honor those who have served our country and to take the exciting step forward in honoring them year-round. The Mayor's Fund launched a $10 million campaign to create the Nevada State Veterans Memorial, located in Ward 4 at the Thunderbird Family Sports Complex. This memorial will feature 18 bronze statues honoring America's military service from the Revolutionary War through today. It will be a lasting space of healing, learning, and pride. Next up, the morning of Wednesday, November 12th, I attended Downtown Summerlin's Giving Machine kickoff. The Giving Machine features 30 items that can be purchased to benefit local nonprofit organizations. It's a big vending machine. Items include water, food, medicine, warm clothing, baby care, emergency shelter, and more. The Giving Machine is a great way to give back to the community, and I appreciated being part of the kickoff event. Later that evening, I had the privilege to attend the Residents Forum Veterans Tribute in Sun City Summerlin. It was a night to honor the brave men and women who have served our country with courage, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment. Thank you to everyone who attended and those who spoke. I want to give a special shout-out to our very own mayor for attending and speaking at the event. It was a night to remember. Next up, Friday, November 14th, I participated in Career Day at Sheila Tar Elementary School. I spoke to the fifth-grade students about what it's like to work in city government. The students were incredibly curious and engaging. They were asking about how they themselves could become leaders and help make a difference. It was a rewarding way, way to share my experiences with this group of kids, and I look forward to the opportunity to do it again in the future. Next up, I started Saturday, November 14th, at Buckskin Basin Park with Get Outdoors Nevada. We cleared 295 pounds of trash, weeds, and planted 12 new trees. I want to thank the volunteers that came out. We had several, despite the rain, almost 50 folks that came out. I appreciate the time, care, and hard work they put in. Whether you were planting trees, removing litter, or pulling weeds, your efforts helped make Buckskin Basin Park a healthier, more beautiful space for our residents. Later that morning, I went to the shredding and prescription drug collection event in Sun City Summerlin. It was very wet. Thank you to the 443 cars that came through the shredding and prescription drop-off. I'm especially grateful to all the volunteers and staff who worked throughout the rain to make it happen. I truly appreciate all your hard work and dedication, making this event a humongous success.
And may I say, one of your constituents contacted me and told me what a trooper you were in the rain, helping everybody out. So I, it was noticed and appreciated.
I don't know if you realize this, but when the paper gets wet, it's even more heavy.
Yes.
My arms didn't work great the next day, but it was an experience. Next up, nine children are missing from our community. With the holidays fast approaching, it is time to come together and help bring these kids home. If you have any information that could help, please contact LVMPD's Missing Person Detail at 702-828-3111. And lastly, you can stay up to date with our updates, community news, and upcoming events and happenings in Ward 4 by following me on Facebook, Instagram, X, all the things. And if you ever need any assistance or have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us directly. The phone works, 702-229-2524. We are always here to provide any help that we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Diaz.
All right, thank you. I should turn on my mic first. Thank you, Madam Mayor. On November 5th, we had Friends of Hunter Circle Park host a community event where UNLV School of Architecture students offered various design proposals for what the future of Hunter Circle Park could look like, and these thoughtful and creative plans were varied and received much engagement from Ward 3 residents that attended. Thank you to my earlier ceremonial honorees, Freddie Golines and Alexandra Stabler, as well as Randy and Lynn Mendray, and all the amazing students that worked on this project and shared their vision. There will be an upcoming showcase scheduled at the top of December, so stay apprised of the date and the location, so you can join us. On November 6th, we headed over to Desert Pines High School to their Dia de los Muertos altar showcase, and I want to just thank Desert Pines High School Student Organization of Latinos for helping share the Dia de los Muertos tradition with their classmates and community at large. I know Councilman Barron from North Las Vegas was also in attendance, but we had two marshals, our very own Lieutenant Manning and Jacqueline Archambault from DPS were also there to take it all in. So everything was beautifully curated, and I enjoyed seeing the mariachi from Desert Pines also performing in, in the space, and look forward to receiving future invitations from our high school students. On November 12th, we stopped by the We Care House. This home is a 30-day residential facility whose mission is to help women recover from the affliction of alcohol and drug addiction, and it's been in continuous operation for over 50 years. Its tremendous success is, is no doubt owed to the great heart and love of the site, and their partners offer the women during some of their most challenging moments. These women become family, and then they continue to pay it forward, and we've even had some of our WinCor graduates go to this house, and I think two of them formerly were here that are going to graduate in December. So it was just awesome. I want to thank Robert Binghart for introducing us and giving us a tour of this bright spot in our community. Also, on November 12th, the Department of Public Service Police Academy graduation happened, and I had the honor of celebrating the graduation of so many folks, 27 to be exact, from the Department of Public Service Citizens Police Academy. I want to thank Chief Potts and the entire team at DPS, especially Jacqueline, for the intense and varied curriculum that these community members completed throughout the 12-week course. I saw some familiar faces, including Jackie Bruno and Gail Lloyd LeCoz's daughter, Morgan, who successfully completed the academy. Again, congratulations to all the graduates. I'm going to go really quickly on this one. This is just a snapshot of our touch-in with the Gavin Gorjean Community Health Center, which is open, and I hope those needing, I served as a conduit and a connector to the Mexican consulate, because they're neighbors, they're diagonally across from each other. And I said, hey, if you have a need, and you have a need, and you have a space, make sure that you guys are referring folks to each other. So that was my mission that day. Just for the future, my annual Ward 3 Senior Thanksgiving Lunch is coming up on November 21st. If you're 55 years young or older, please RSVP via the QR link on the screen, or call us, 702-229-1515. This is one of my favorite events of the year, because it includes yummy food, but has music, dancing, and fun raffle prizes. I wanted to put a plug-in for our Neon City Festival, happening this weekend, that will return to downtown. We had it last year, and we're repeating it again. 2025 lineup is officially out, with music from all genres. So just make sure you check up the lineup and come on down to downtown Las Vegas. Want to put a plug-in for our Tamales and Mariachi Festival that is quickly approaching. It will be Saturday, December 6th, in our fabulous Goodman Plaza in our newly unveiled Las Vegas Civic Center. So again, Saturday, December 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And those that have gone to one of these before, it's just an awesome, lively event, where the Latino culture kind of brings a lot of mariachis, some of them Grammy Award-winning, and then you get to enjoy one of the yummiest things that we enjoy during the wintertime, which is tamales. And you got to get there early to get the best kind, because they do run out. So that's my tip to you. If you want to get the best ones, come on early. It's 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Just putting out that we're working on our Christmas events in the ward. We will have two happening on Saturday, December 13th. So just follow our social media channels, and you'll get all of the information. It's free and open to the public. So we just want to make sure every child has a really wonderful Christmas and has a gift to open during this holiday season. And then last but not least, we have Viva la Opera, Holiday Spectacular. So we're having opera, and it is again at the Carol and G Goodman Plaza, Saturday, December 20th, noon to 2:00. And I know we all want to start getting into the holiday spirit, so this is a perfect one, a few days right before we get to Christmas. So as always, you can get ahold of my dynamic team and myself via the phone, via email, and, or even at a city council meeting. So thank you so much, Mayor, and I look forward to seeing someone in one of these events coming up soon.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rooney.
I'd like to start today by recognizing our team member, Maddie Weingart. Tomorrow is her birthday, so if you see her today, please stop by and wish her a very happy birthday, as well as tomorrow. Maddie, thank you for being a part of our team and always bringing your A-game. We love you, even though you are a member of the Wolf Pack and did not wear red today. Next slide. Earlier this month, we had a town hall meeting dedicated Earlier this month, we had a town hall meeting dedicated to discussing how to keep our Ward 6 neighborhood safe and clean. Thank you to our city and metro partners for joining us to share helpful information with our neighbors. We're not all work in Ward 6. Team Bruni was pleased to have co-sponsored Iron Mountains Movie in the Park, where we handed out free popcorn. Thank you for allowing us to be part of the fun. It's that time of the year, again, to acknowledge our small businesses in Ward 6, and we're thrilled that it was another full house at our Ward 6 Small Business Breakfast. Thank you to our guest speakers, and special thanks to our Northwest area small business owners who keep our economy charged. Another wonderful book, I'd ethos with Bruni, on the books. We're so grateful for our engaged neighbors, some new faces and familiar faces who showed up to talk development, schools, water conservation, and everything in between. We truly love these conversations. In our latest episode of Access City Council, we wanted to address the growing crisis in our valley of fatal accidents involving e-bikes and e-scooters. As such, we talked with local bike shop owners and metro about why my e-bike ordinance is so important. Special thanks to Crystal Allen, who allowed us to go out into the field and play reporter for a day. Last weekend, we wrapped up our last Centennial Hills Tales and Mocktails Book Club meeting of the year. Thank you to all of the readers who joined us this year as we explored Nevada's unique history and character. A special thank you to Centennial Hills Library for being such a stellar partner. Our next book club meeting is January 17th, and next year, we'll be lightening things up a bit and focusing on murder mystery books. Last Saturday, I was honored to give the commencement speech at United Education Institute's graduation. The United Education Institute is a career and trade school that gives their graduates hands-on learning experience. We celebrated almost 300 graduates in the areas of HVAC, technology, medical billing, insurance coding, automotive technology, and electrical technology, important careers that are keeping our community running and that cannot be replaced by artificial intelligence. We're heading into the holiday season. If you're looking for ways to work off some of the desserts that you indulge in over Thanksgiving, join us on Saturday, December 6th, and this is, the date here is wrong. Oh, actually, I guess, no, we're doing it Friday. Okay. Friday, December 5th, from 9:00 to 12:00. We're going to be cleaning up Centennial Hills Park. We're going to be partnering with Get Outdoors Nevada to beautify our favorite park. After helping clean, come celebrate the next day and get into the holiday cheer by joining us at Floyd Lamb Park from 10:00 to 2:00 for our annual Cowboy Christmas event. The following week, we'll be hosting our annual Navidad con Colibres event at Bradley Bridle Park from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. As always, we want to hear from you. There's the, yep, great. Please call us at 702-229-5463, or email us at ward6@lasvegasnevada.gov.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we've been out in the community, working side-by-side with residents to celebrate, support, and strengthen Ward 2 and the rest of the community. We invite you to join us for our monthly Ward 2 Breakfast Buzz, which is a great way to connect. We first got outdoors with Nevada, and at the Kelly Zahar Parks, and we were talking about the joy that cleaning up parks gives to people who visit them, and so I think that's always important to remind people when they're picking up trash and planting trees. We also, I had a chance to visit with Tom and Russ Letizia on his show, The Middle Ground. Tom and I were reminiscing, we've known each other 38 years, so I'm old enough to have been an adult 38 years ago. Breakfast Buzz is our monthly reach-out to Ward 2 constituents, and we're going to be starting mobile hours on, in January, so to reach out to even more constituents. We also, I had the great distinction to represent new mayor in it with the teenagers of Hope Means Nevada. Hope Means Nevada is a very important nonprofit in our community whose mission is to eliminate teen suicide and empower Nevada's youth to live hopeful lives. And what was terrific about this event, and you can see the young people, many of the young people who were recognized, they raised $50,000, the young people did, the teens, through their networks in order to support what they are doing and to promote the mission of eliminating teen suicide. So, I was very honored to be able to spend some time with those terrific people. And then upcoming events, we have a Breakfast Buzz coming up in December, as well as a towway drive and classic car show. I also am responding to constituent concerns in their neighborhoods. And finally, we were, we are excited in Ward 2 to help the superintendent of Schools, Joan E. Burt, celebrate American Education Week. Six schools in Ward 2 received recognition as being part of her honor roll, and that is something that I know that we all celebrate when our schools succeed. Want to wish everyone a true wonderful and happy Thanksgiving, and we always encourage Ward 2 residents to connect with us, make sure you're telling us about the challenges that you're having, if any, and we hope to see you at an event in our community soon.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly, and on behalf of the entire City Council, city staff, city leadership, we want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and as we go forward, we know people, some people are having serious challenges. Please know that the city is here to serve you and do whatever we can to help with, to help deal with any challenges that you have. And with that, the City Council meeting is now adjourned.